We start with library.
Start with the library, I'm sorry.
Kevin.
I won't call the meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District to order.
Yeah.
You did that so well. I would call the Camarillo Library Board Meeting to order, please, for the February 10th meeting. Let's let the record reflect that, what are they, directors? What are they?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, let me put my-
Microphone on, that might be better.
Trustees.
Let's let the record reflect that all the trustees are present. Flag salute.
Mr. McDonald, do you want to lead us in that?
Please rise and join us in the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Amendments to this agenda?
There's no amendments.
Public comments for the library? Consent calendar?
Move the approval.
Second.
The motion is second, you further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Departmental, no items, okay. Comments from staff?
Barbara, the other side. Yes, Your Honor, Mrs. Wolf is here, would like to give you a quick update.
Sure. Good.
Thank you so much, trustees.
You come bearing gifts, or?
I do, I come bearing gifts, and it is this Saturday, our seventh annual Chinese New Year event, it's going to be outside, Mayor Morgan will be kicking it off, and-
He's been working on his Chinese all week.
I also have Italian and Chinese.
And we, oh my.
I speak a little Chinese.
We also hope to livestream it around the world, using a new app, we stream some of our events, so we expect to have, we were testing it on the lawn today for about two minutes, and we had four people already jump on and comment on how nice the lawn looks, so it's very popular. I have T-shirts for all of the trustees, and here is the newsletter, if you can turn the camera on it, just saying that the Chinese New Year begins at 1:00, the events start at 1:30, and lasts till about 4:00 o'clock, when the lion dancers come out, make sure you bring your dollar bills, so you can give your dollar bills to the lion dancers, and have luck and prosperity for the rest of the year.
Great. Now, this is the Year of the Monkey, am I right?
It is, it is the Year of the Monkey.
Do you want to know how I knew that?
How did you know that?
It's yours. I'm glad you asked, we have a shirt line called Renspooner, and they made a Year of the Monkey to commemorate the Chinese New Years, so that's how I knew that.
Very nice.
I'll go out and buy one.
That's pretty impressive, isn't it? What do you think, huh?
You get to say-
Mayor could wear one.
Nonghai Fat Chai.
That's right.
That means Happy New Year.
Any other comments, or anything for Barbara?
Looking forward to it.
Thanks once again.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work. Okay, comments from the staff?
Richard?
Richard, anything today?
No other comments, thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Any comments from the trustees? Comments at all? Okay, with that, we're adjourned.
Okay, now that I've practiced so well, I will call the Board of Directors of the Camarillo Sanitary District to order, and ask the record to reflect that all board members are present. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There's no amendments.
Public comments, I don't have any cards, is there anybody who would like to speak to the Camarillo Sanitary District Board of Directors? Seeing no one come forward, I'll go on to the consent calendar.
Move the approval, withdraw.
Second.
The motion is second, to approve the consent calendar, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Comments from staff?
No comments.
Comments from board members? Oh, Mr. Fang did-
No, I don't have any comments.
Comments from board members?
Nope.
Okay, at this time, we will recess to 6:00, or whenever we take up this, in the study session, the mid-year budget review.
Okay. A special meeting of the Camarillo Successor Agency, would you please, I'll let the record reflect that all members are present. Amendments to the agenda, we have any amendments, Mr.? No amendments. Okay, consent calendar, oh wait, public comments. Is anyone out here who understands what the Camarillo Successor Agency is? There are nobody here to talk, so no comments. Next. We go to, roll, I mean, to minutes.
Consent calendar, I move the approval.
We have a motion as second, any other comments? Seeing none, please vote. That motion passes 5 to 0. We have no departmental items, any comments from the board members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at this time. Now, let's let the City Council come to order, let the record reflect that all members are present. Any amendments to the agenda? There's no amendments. No amendments. Presentations, we have no items for presentations tonight, consent calendar?
Move the approval.
We have a motion, and an approval, motion from Charlotte, and approval from Bill, please vote. That motion passes 5 to 0. This meeting is going really fast, folks. Okay, we move down to the, move down to City Attorney, I'm sorry, there's no items for public work, City Council, any of the others. Community development, want to just take that over, Joe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Morgan. Mr. David Mo will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. On December 9th, 2015, the City Council approved a contribution to the West Ventura County Winter Warming Shelter, and authorized $14,140 to provide bus service from Camarillo to the warming shelter, and then in the morning back to Camarillo. On December 14th, the bus service to the warming shelter was started, and offered for seven weeks. Unfortunately, there was little interest in taking the bus to the warming shelter, and staff suspended the operation at the end of January. Staff contacted several homeless individuals, and asked them why they were not taking advantage of the free service to the Oxnard Shelter, and the feedback we received is they would rather stay in Camarillo than go to a shelter in Oxnard. They didn't believe us, when we said we were going to bring them back to Camarillo.
Give you a one-way bus trip.
And, some of them actually have a route where they go and collect recyclables at night, and they use that as a source of income for themselves. So, due to the lack of interest in the bus service to the warming shelter, and based on the feedback that we received, staff is recommending these funds be reprogrammed into a proposed temporary housing voucher program for the homeless individuals. Under the proposed program, known and local individuals living on the street will have an opportunity to have shelter during inclement weather events. The program would only be available if rain is forecasted for that night, or if the temperature is anticipated to be below 45 degrees. The program would only provide one night stay at a hotel that has agreed to participate in the program, and the hotels that have agreed are Motel 6 and the Goodnight Inn. We also contacted the Days Inn and Best Western, but they were not interested at this time. The proposed hotel voucher program is only a temporary program, and would terminate after the reallocated bus service funding, money which we have approximately $12,000 would be exhausted, or March 31st, which coincides with the winter warming shelter date, whichever comes first. Staff would also like to inform the City Council that St. Vincent de Paul has applied for the city's community development block grant program, and they're requesting funding to provide emergency shelter services and other essential services during the next fiscal year. So if we, for next winter, if we have, if St. Vincent de Paul is approved, we'll have a resource where we can direct them to them, and then St. Vincent de Paul will provide the service, and the city wouldn't have to do that directly. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Questions, Kevin?
Yeah, couple of questions. Is there a limit to how much any one individual can, can partake in this?
No, as long as the program would be activated with the rain in the forecast, or below 45 degrees, an individual could take advantage of that every, every time that the program is offered.
Yeah, because I, I think, the homeless, to what I've been able to ascertain, and by no means am I anywhere near an expert on this, I do deal with, with a couple of them on a continuous basis. What they have in common is they're all homeless, but some of them are in much worse shape than others are, and some of them are pretty professional panhandlers. So, the question I have, I think, I think this is a really good idea and a good program, but it's not necessarily going to alleviate some of the issues that we've got in the city here. And, if that's the case, I'm just wondering if we ought to perhaps look at maybe limiting how many any one person can have at one time. I understand when we burn through that amount of money, then the program ends, but is our intent to house those that are local and are here continuously, or perhaps some that, that do kind of transition in and out?
We're, the intent is to house the local homeless population here, on the streets right now, that, that are known to the police department. Project Hope knows and goes around, and Joe, Deputy Joe Preciado participates and runs Project Hope, and he interacts with them on a regular basis, and so he, he's familiar with everyone that's here now, and if there's a new person in town, or is coming through, that we, you know, tell the businesses, and, you know, we try to, you know, have Mr. Preciado become aware of them, and he will actually go out and provide the services, which is more of the long-term solution to that, to the homeless issue, to them, and he's been successful in doing that. This program is just a stopgap to provide emergency shelter right now during inclement weather, so, and right now, we don't have a cap on that. We do, we've, we have estimated that the, our $12,000 of remaining funding would buy approximately 150 nights.
And then the program's going to start, what was it, December, what was the month, I think I read?
The, the program, it would be activated during inclement weather, and we looked at the forecast, the 10-day, and-
Okay. So it won't be continuous days, if the weather's not conducive to that, okay.
Exactly.
Did you say, did you say inclement weather?
Yes.
When?
Yeah.
There's two more weeks still showing no rain.
Yeah, the, the first forecast of rain is next week.
Maybe.
10%, I got it right here. Charlotte?
Yeah, well, too bad there aren't reporters here, so they can make sure we're stressing this, this is a, a short-term program that goes through the end of March, and it's only when the weather's bad, so you can't, unless we were blessed with many, many, many continuous days of rather, of, of rain, I, I don't think it would, anybody would be able to say have a permanent home at one of these motels, because it, it goes on a night-by-night basis, and you only get the, the vouchers for, if rain is cast for today only, you get it for tonight, if it's forecast for two or three days, then you could get it for that, is that the way, or one day at a time?
It would be for one day at a time, and the intent is where, it would actually mirror the, the shelter intent, so, for example, if they go to the winter warming shelter now, they would have to leave in the morning, and they'd have to come back, so we're trying to kind of do, have that same service, emergency shelter, but during the day, they'd have to actually leave and come back later.
Okay, so I do have one question. At the end, can we get a report on how many people have participated in this program?
Yes.
And, and how many days of rain they could, or days of inclement weather, when they could have participated, and then how many participated those days? Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll keep track of the opportunity evenings, when we forecast inclement weather, and then we'll keep track of how many people took advantage of this relief valve to provide emergency housing.
Thank you.
Mayor?
My question is, how do they go about getting this? Who's administering the program, and then who actually is the one who gives out the, the vouchers?
The vouchers would be distributed by the police department, so they, like I said, they know who the, the homeless people that are in the city right now are, and they'd be, when, we'd notify the police department when there's forecasted inclement weather, and provide them with the vouchers, and then they would actually go up to the, the homeless individual, and provide them the voucher for the night, they'd date it and sign it, and then they'd also be numbered, too, so we, we wouldn't have duplication.
And so they would deliver them, then, and there's not a spot they go to?
We would have a pre-arrangement with the hotels that agreed to participate, that we would have the funding in place and available for when people take advantage of the opportunity with the voucher, then we would be invoiced to pay for their stay.
Okay. But, but they, the police then are going to go out and deliver this, or they come to them?
Yes, the police will hand-deliver the vouchers to the locally-known homeless individuals.
A service, okay. And I, I had a question a little bit along the lines of Mr. Kildes, I know there are some who are more needy than others, but we're relying on the police department to make that distinction between those who really need the help, and those who might be choosing otherwise?
Yes, that's correct.
I think if you ask Commander, Preciado knows all these people, and he knows exactly who they are, and if it's a stranger, then it looked as a stranger, but they've got, they've got a pretty good idea who our people are, and actually where they hang out, because they hang out in kind of the same areas, they don't go across town.
That's correct.
Okay, Bill, you had a question?
I was just going to ask the question of, when does the decision made to, tonight it's going to rain, or not, I mean, or get under 45 degrees, or not?
Our staff will collaborate with public work staff, because they tend to monitor the forecast as it relates to storm preparation.
Sometimes we announce a storm that doesn't show up.
I understand, so we're just going to have to use our best judgment and collaboration with the public work staff on that.
You know, if you look at your Weather Bureau thing on this thing, it's called the Weather Channel, this morning, this morning, there were two chances of 10% next week. Now, there's three chances of 20%, so they're guessing as much as we are, but still, very low chance of rain, even all next week, and it doesn't show any of them down that 45 range, as far as low's concerned, so it looks like we're-
Yeah, we actually looked on the Weather Channel.
Yep, same thing, 20%, three days in a row.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would move to reallocate funding dedicated for transportation to the winter warming shelter, and repurpose the funding to establish a temporary hotel voucher program for winter 2016.
I'll second the motion.
Yes, motion is second by Mr. Kilday, please vote. That motion passes 5 to 0. Okay, let's move down the chart here, down the line here, do we have any, excuse me, happened here, oh, wrong page. Go down through, and we have no, nothing for City Attorney, no items, no items City Manager, City Clerk, Administration, let's go to the closed, we will be going into a closed session, Mr. City Attorney, you want to talk about that closed session?
Yeah, I'll make the announcement, we will be going into a closed session later this evening, when we take a break, the closed session will be a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9D2, number of cases is two, and we have another closed session, which is a conference with real property negotiator, the authority is Government Code Section 549, 56.8, the property is the former library, which is located at 3100 Ponderosa. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda, the negotiating parties, Pleasant Valley School District, under negotiation is price and terms of payment, and if anyone from the public wishes to comment upon any of these closed session items, they have an opportunity to do so before we go into closed session.
Okay. Let's move down, Mr. City Manager, you have any comments?
I don't have any comments this evening.
Okay. City Attorney, comments otherwise?
No.
Okay, City Council, Charlotte, tell us what you got, anything?
Yes, I have quite a few things, because I spent the week attending meetings. I attended the SUCI Site Authority meeting, things seem to be going better there, but if you will attend the SUCI Connection Luncheon next week on Thursday, I'm sure you'll hear all about it. I attended the RDP 21 meeting, sorry, on the second, Captain Heinlein gave us a report on the test and evaluation operations at Navair, and it was quite interesting. I attended the Camarillo Ranch Foundation meeting on February 2nd, and they presented their video, I've asked them to get a copy to the city, it's a five-minute video, I actually think that it would be great if they came and presented it for us, so that you could see it, and also for the, I don't think it's even five minutes, but it's, it's a great video, it talks about what all happens at the ranch, and it's going to be distributed to the schools that send children on the Visit the Ranch program, so that the, the teachers and the children will know, will be a bit prepared before they come. I also attended the Ranch Foundation's retreat on Saturday, from 8 till 2:30, or quarter to 3:00, it was very educational to me, apparently they've changed their governance model from a, whatever they had before, a hands-on, board-run operation, to, they're calling it the governance model, which I think is more similar to having a, a city manager with a council, and so now they have a CEO, and Marissa Lopez, and frankly, everybody has their opinions of all of these people, but of the three directors, or four that they've had, one only lasted a month, and she, I think, would have been pretty good if she'd just stuck around, but I, I think Marissa's a, a very good one, so she seems to really have her finger on the pulse of it, she's been there for three years, I think she said, and I think she's doing a good job. And there were a few other things that I just passed along to staff, because they seemed to be staff things. I also attended the Vietnam Veterans Commemoration Ad Hoc Committee with Mr. Morgan, Captain McHugh, and Captain Grossgold have agreed to help us, and they did help us very much, and we are starting to get organized, and that's a good thing, because, as you know, we have submitted the, the application to Department of Defense to be the, what's it called, supporting?
Commemorative.
Partner.
Partner, right, commemorative partner.
That's the word I was looking for, and, so anyway, we're moving right along on that, and we'll be bringing a formal report to you, I think, at the next council meeting, there wasn't time to get it on the agenda, we only meant Monday. I also attended a Citizen Selection Committee meeting. You name the committee, I was, I think I was on it this time. A Citizen Selection Committee meeting, and we looked at the applicants for the various volunteer opportunities, we're going to be interviewing this coming Friday, so I'm not going to get into detail, because at the next council meeting, we'll be having our recommendations to you. And, other than that, I attended for the mayor, a ribbon-cutting at One of a Kind Creative Cards, or something like that, out on, in the Mission Oaks Park, it's just down the street from the high school, and it was very interesting. It's going to be interesting to see how people react to that, very interesting new business. The lady explained that she lost her job about six months ago, and didn't know what to do, so she decided to take a risk and open this up, it's not a chain, it's something she thought up and is just going with, so I wished her the very best on behalf of all of us. Who knows, we may have a, a second first store of a national chain pretty soon. Okay, that's all I had.
You're talking about along with Rocket Fist?
Yeah.
For everybody to know, that's my son's store, 114 stores out there.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe One of a Kind Cards will be that way before long. Do you make your own, then? Yes, you go in, and, she has a special computer that will cut anything that, I mean, the cutter, make huge things from whatever you put into the computer, so you get in there, you design your own, and then you create, you print it out, and she's got about 35 or 40 different kinds of paper, and within those, she has different colors, like 35 or 40 different colors, so it's quite an operation, along with ribbons, and strings, and buttons, and bows, and sequins, and you name it, she's got it, so, good luck to her.
Kevin?
That's it. I apologize, I can't, if you've seen, I'm searching for my list here, so I'm going to have to wing it a little bit, and catch up next time. We did have the oversight board in the day, after, I guess, our study session, so last Thursday, and the board did approve our ROPs, so they got them off, and keep us out of trouble in Sacramento. And besides that, I don't know, I have, I tell you, I've been busy, I can't tell you what I've been doing. So that's, that's it, and I don't have any complaints tonight, so at least I'll save them for budget session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, let's see, attended a VRSD meeting, January 20th, 28th, and today, we had our board retreat, and I'll have a, I don't want to get into real discussion, but we've got a pretty aggressive capital improvement budget next three years out there, our general manager, Mark Lawler, will be retiring, we're out right now on an executive search for that. And, just one thing, I want to compliment this council, and the previous councils, and our, our staff for the quality of our streets, as I drive around in various jurisdictions, our streets are quite good, you're not, they're not perfect, you know, some of them still are not where we probably would like them to see, but overall, just a good job to the staff, and, and the council, too, for supporting that. That's all.
Bill?
Yeah, a couple of things, first of all, I attended that same Citizens Appointment Committee that Councilmember Craven did, and we have a lot of good candidates, and it's going to be difficult to make some selections, but I think we'll get it done next, this week, and get it to you in a couple of weeks. Secondly, and more importantly, or equally important, was I attended the VCTC meeting for, for the Transportation Commission, and one of the presentations we had was a presentation by the Executive Director of SCAG, who presented us with a recently adopted 2016, 2040 Transportation Review, which they indicate that we're going to need something like $80 billion over the next, in the next several years to meet the demands, primarily, just because the present system is wearing out, and there hasn't been the attention paid to it, or the money paid to it that it needed, and so it doesn't matter whether you even have the same amount of population, which they say is going to increase, but not all that much, frankly, about, over that 27 years, 28 years, so they figure about 25,000 people. So, but, on the other hand, it's going to take a lot of money to do it. And so we are going to be talking, probably in May, about whether or not to, to take a position, or to authorize a placement on the ballot of a sales tax for transportation purposes, and that's, if it, if it happens, and it'll be on the November ballot of this year, so, looks to me, unless, unless I'm directed otherwise, it looks to me like it's the only viable alternative to meet some of these needs, most of which will go to prove the highways, mainly, 101 freeway is going to take a huge amount of money to do that. So, anyway, that's what we got going for us.
Can I make a comment on, on VCTC? We might, before you have to take action at VCTC and voting on it, it probably should come to this council, the last action this council took on that question was not to support a sales tax measure, so I think we would need to discuss it, and I guess the question I would have, have they done any surveys, or any kind of, so, you know, maybe bring that back to us in preparation for you having to vote on it, because-
I'd be happy to do that, and that's why-
It was the last thing, and it's been a number of years ago, so it's, you know-
It's been, at least 10.
I think before we do that, though, Darren will be coming here to talk to us about it. I talked to him today, so he'll be coming- I talked to him today, so he'll be coming. I think we should hold off till after his presentation on it.
Oh, I'm not saying to vote on it. I think before, he has to vote. We need to...
Okay. Darren will be here, tell us the whole story.
Looks like ours will be, they're looking, shooting for May because that's the time they need to start the process to get it on the ballot if it's going to go on the ballot in November. So, and that meeting in May is of, whatever the first Friday of May is, whatever that would be.
March 3rd. And the other thing along those lines, did he show you the video that they had, the little, from SCAG?
Oh, yeah.
And I mentioned it last time because we had it at VCOG. I really think it would be something worth showing on our government channel, showing here, because I think it's good information for the public to see as well. Because as soon as we start talking about sales tax, we're going to hear, you know, from both sides of it.
Yeah, this, this is a, the video you're talking about is one that basically explains this program here. Yeah, it's a very good one.
It's short, it's not too...
And it's short, and it, it doesn't get into esoteric terms and all the other stuff that tends to, people shake their heads and say, oh, I think I know what they meant, but unsure. So, how we can talk and see about getting that.
We, Laura at VCOG has the copy. She got it from SCAG. So just ask her to, she's got it digitally and...
Okay, we have it on our list of to-do things, and we'll get it as soon as we can. And just, if I could expand a little bit, Darren Kettle, the Executive Director of VCTC is under direction from the VCTC Commission to meet with all the cities and reach out and make a presentation. So it's not just Camerionis, and they're fully being transparent and laying out the facts, the status.
Do you know what, excuse me, Bruce, do you know when that's going to happen?
I, I don't know. Has he contacted you? No, I don't have a specific date.
He mentioned to me today, maybe in April. That's what he mentioned to me today when we were at the meeting.
That, that sounds right.
April would work, but, yeah. Because if, if we wouldn't have that before this council takes a position on it, I think it's, we've got to let them know that it's short, kind of a few, short fuse.
He wants to wait the longest he can before the May meeting because he wants to get the latest information in on polling to, to present and, and so on.
Here's one other problem we have, and he and I talked about that today. The governor is possibly placing something on the ballot for transportation to improve the highways of California, more taxes. And I don't know how that's going to affect this, because last time they did something like this, boom, they failed.
Well, the legislature's going to have to decide to do that.
Pardon me?
The legislature will...
I, I just said that the governor is proposing that, so we'll see. That'll give us time to see if he does put it on the ballot, or if they get it on the ballot. Through, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Well, a few things. Number one, the Air Pollution Control Board was, was canceled for February. We'll be back on in March. The, I went to the Camarillo Ranch Foundation with Charlotte. We sat there and went through all that. She went to the, I could not go to the retreat, but Charlotte did. Fiesta, today we got everything done for the Fiesta. It's all approved. We had the sheriffs, and we had the fire department, and it's, it's where it was last year. Everything, nothing's really changed to make anything, to make it worry about it. So we've got that done. Parking lot was, the parking lot layout for our, where the farmer's market is, was all talked about and kind of approved today. Everyone came aboard. There's a few little small things that they just want to make sure they're notified before the, before some of the payments taken up for the improvements. But some of those improvements are flat, what would you call that, Joe? Flat, tiled, or...
Yeah, it's called a zero curb, so...
Zero curbs. So it doesn't really affect us.
It's all at the same level as the asphalt, so there's no trip hazards.
But this is the work that VCTC is doing with the building, right?
Well, no, yes, yes.
Yes, the building and improving the parking lot.
Right. And they found out there won't be that much debris and things for them to worry about. They'll have a fence up there that it won't affect the farmer's market. They just have to worry about restrooms now and things like that because it won't be open like it was before. And so that's some of the few little things going to be taken care of and looked at. And also down the line, if they start doing that parking lot, if you walk over the schools' parking lot, I shouldn't say it's schools because we've got access to that because what we built behind the school, we're in control of that. You can sweep up the asphalt. That's how bad that is. So they're going, they're talking about same time doing both. And they can do it in a week, so it, hopefully it won't harm the, anything that's going on there at the weekend. So those are good newses, and things went well. Went to Police Citizens Academy and with our commander there and wished them all well. And they're all going through that training, and we'll give them awards later when they're through. I shouldn't say training, the education, that's the word. We had a goal study. Remember the goal study we had? And that 3D, who was talking about the 3D thing that was being made?
The printer?
There was someone talking about something that they made it out of, at the school or something.
It was at the library.
Well, okay, there was something else. Someone mentioned it a minute ago, but it's like...
We had a 3D printer there.
Yeah. With 3D printers, so you guys know, will print up, you put the picture in and things, and it'll print it up in 3D. You want a fence, it looks like it, there it is, little 3D fence. So we've got some things coming in our lifetime that's going to be amazing. They're talking about building, being able to build doorknobs and all kinds of things through this 3D thing. If you don't get, if you want to see it, I think it's still at the library, isn't it?
I can do one better than that. The Navy's looking at them for mechanical parts, so instead of having to send them over for trucks, they just print them. And they're even looking at buildings for the CBs when they go in. They just put in all the requirements as far as the earth and where they're going to put it, and out we'll pop one. That's...
So today, we're looking at future, folks.
Jules Verne to me, but...
We had a ribbon, I had a ribbon cutting at Sweet Frog. You know what Sweet Frog is? It's across the street over there by the Starbucks. Well, that's excellent yogurt, I got to tell you. It's really good, and they're friendly people. Went to the Chinese club, wasn't a dinner, but their kids were graduating from the class, the language class, and they called me and said, Mike, you're going to come over here, Mayor. So I went over and we took pictures with all the kids and everything and spoke a little Chinese and had some fun. But those kids are amazing. These are little dinky ones, and they're having, they're doing things and drawings and so on. And our calligraphy, our calligraphy expert in this town is Mr. Liu, Richard Liu. Richard Liu was there doing calligraphy for each one of them, saying, you know, Happy New Year and all that stuff. Transportation forum, right here in this room. It was, I'd say it's, it was about three-quarters full, seniors. And they learned a lot that day on transportation. We had a panel up here. The only thing that they didn't seem like they could get across, because I don't, no one's really pushing it, but they're looking for a free ride around town kind of thing. I said, folks, we've got the trolley. And I explained the trolley to each one of them, where it stopped, where you can drive to and park, pick it up and go around, be back in a half an hour. And I got some real happy faces on those. And so I think we're going to have many more ride the trolley, because they can take their car or take the bus to right here near City Council, City Hall, walk over there and catch it at Trader Joe's, because we described all this to them. And that was kind of fun. And so they learned a lot, got their brochures and all that stuff, so I think we'll have more ridership now, even more, even though we are doing well. We're doing quite well. We had a 100th anniversary, 100th birthday of a gentleman. This, you saw it in the paper. This man was amazing. He comes into the bowling alley, Leisure Village Bowling League, carrying his bowling ball out of his car. He bowled 148 that day.
Wow.
And the paper said he had 128 average. He has 138 average. And he's in good shape. So I gave it to him and said, can you tell us what you attribute to your longevity? And he said, take a guess, anybody.
He eats pickles?
Drink a day.
He said, he said, stay active. And I don't see this man looking any older. He's been around for a long time, probably beat us again. Boys and Girls Club induction. I inducted the Boys and Girls Club officers. Unfortunately, not all of them were told that far ahead of time about the induction. That's why I heard.
We all knew.
Well, we only had four show up, okay? Out of all the Boys and Girls Club officers, we had a lot of kids, I mean, a lot of kids, getting awards and performing. They are amazing at that Boys and Girls Club, what they're teaching those kids and how they're working with them on the computers after school. Four hundred-plus kids go to that, that every day, and they're growing. And so it's, we've got to keep, help, if we can, help them whichever way we can. Went to Vietnam's veterans thing with Charlotte. She told you about that. We're moving along, but she missed two other guys. One guy was Danny Crowe. Danny Crowe was my classmate who went to Vietnam. He was there two years, and he's, he was the head of the American Legion for a while. He's really glad to be part of this. And then we also had, have one other one that joined us that day, Don Watch, who flew helicopters in Vietnam, former city councilman. He wants to be there, so he'll be there. So the committee's picking up, and we're doing some good plans for the first two events this year, and then we'll have two events next year. And we'll be telling you about that next meeting probably.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, next month. That's it.
I have one other thing you remember.
Sure, Charlotte.
I'm sorry. I forgot to write it down, but Mr. Kildee reminded me. In the locker room at the YMCA this morning, there was a conversation between two women, and I'm not sure if they knew I was in there or not, because it's all divided up. And one woman was saying that she was certainly glad she lived in Camarillo. And the other woman said, well, why is that? And she said, well, when I was looking for a place to move, I don't know where she moved from. She said, when I was looking for a place to move to 15 years ago, I came to Camarillo, and they were working on Old Town, but I could see they had a plan and they were following it. And I looked at various places, and I couldn't, it looked kind of helter-skelter. And so I moved to Camarillo, and I've been watching. And she said, it's really obvious they have a plan and they followed it. She said, that's the most important thing. So I spoke up and I said, well, one of the women said, you know, there's a woman who, who often comes in here, who's on the city council. And I said, well, that would be me. So I thanked her and told her I would pass along her compliment. And then she said, to thank the city council and staff for making sure they followed the plans they developed. And she, she had moved in when we were doing the Arneal Road Bridge, and she has watched the development of all these things, and she was really pleased that she made her choice to move here. I didn't ask her where the other choice, where, where else she was considering.
Okay, any other things going on?
Public comment.
We'll take public comments now. It's kind of out of order, but we'll take public comments because you're here. Who wants to address the city council? Whoops. Didn't see that. Kelly Long.
Hello, Mayor Morgan, council members, Mr. Feng, and administrators. Thank you very much for having me here today. I'm a school board member, and I'm here representing Pleasant Valley School District along with Superintendent Rayanne Michaels and Board Member Bob Rust, also a student that's in the Pleasant Valley School District that I drug here because she's my daughter. Anyways, we just wanted to say thank you very much for considering turning the former Camarillo Library into a school for our PEEPs program. We have submitted a letter, which all of you have had, and it is immediate need for our district. So I really hope that you look at that. And that we enjoy working with the city. And that we hope that you support this project for it's the future of our students. And then along with that, I would like to plug the top 10 awards. Our Ms. Michaels has received the Woman of the Year. I hope everyone is coming to it. We also have some other fabulous citizens and community members that are in there and also businesses. So please, top 10, and that is, what is the date again?
March 4th.
Ah, thank you. March 4th, so please attend. Thank you.
How many members here are going? I think I've signed up. Kevin?
I am.
Charlotte? Okay, so at least three of us are going to that, so. Four of us are going out of five. So, okay. Anything else? Any other comments for, from the audience? Seeing none, we will recess until our 7:30 meeting. With county, with, county, with, with, will the city council please come to order? God, will the record reflect that all city council members are present? Could we please stand? Bill, could you leave this flag salute? Be happy to.
Please join me in slinging the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some presentations tonight to some people who did a fantastic job and been doing that for the last several years. We honor a lot of people in our community for the things that they do, but to me, this is something that really provided a service to our community, and it's a great addition. And I think they're going to still do it next year. But this will be the Moose Lodge family, Moose people that are here represent the Moose Lodge. Could you please come forward? Come on, fellow Moose.
We won't let you out, though.
Jerry, you never thought you'd get up here, did you? Come on.
I'm not going to run for president.
Too much of a walk, huh? Okay. Well, tonight, we have, again, the pleasure of honoring a group that's done so much for the community. And they don't brag about it, they don't go out and tell people all about it, but when you serve 700 meals to the needy on Thanksgiving, what was that?
That was a thumbs up, very sorry.
There you go. 700 meals for the needy in our community, that's a tremendous effort to, as a contribution to our community. And tonight, we decided, let's honor that effort by giving us some proclamations, and hopefully they'll come back and do it again next year. First, I'd like to present this to the, a certificate to the Camerio Moose Family Center. Who's representing, you're representing tonight, Jerry? Jerry's been a long-term member from the beginning, I think it's the beginning.
Charter.
Yeah, charter. I was too, out on Flynn Road. We were in a warehouse on Flynn Road in those days. And they've grown and grown, and now they're in a beautiful spot, and the place is packed all the time. If it's not doing karaoke or bingo or something else, got great food on Friday nights. But anyway, this is an honor, this is a certificate of recognition from the City of Camarillo, thanking you for your efforts and all the things that you've done for the community. Yeah, look over here. We've got two others, and these are two that really put these things together. I hope they're coming back. Are you coming back and doing it again?
Nine years. Nine years.
Nine years. These two have been charging through and doing all the cooking. How'd you like to cook 700 meals? It's a lot of work. Well, this is for Rebecca Thompson and all her efforts and things that she's done to help our community.
Thank you very much, sir.
And lastly, Wayne. Wayne, how long have you been doing this?
Since the start.
Nine years ago, same thing. You're coming back, right?
I'm assisting the new chairman of the Thanksgiving community at the Moose Family Center.
So they talked another one into nine more years. Okay, good. Wayne, thank you very much for your efforts and all the things you've done. Right here.
Thank you, sir, so much. Thank you.
You don't have to wait for Thanksgiving to come by. We're all here, every one of you guys.
You're welcome. Thank you for everything you do for our city.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Now, okay, now our next item on the agenda is 211 Annual Report. Just give your name.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Kellum. I'm 211 Director at Interface Children and Family Services. Thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to express our appreciation for the support the city has provided, and also to provide a little information about what we've been able to do to support Camarillo residents in the last year. Normally, at this time, I would come with our full county annual report. We're actually syncing that up with our new website, which we're very excited about that will make kind of a self-service option, more, more easy and intuitive as well for the community to search for resources separately, as well as obviously the phone service continuing as it is now. So as you likely know, 211 exists to connect people in need with services in the community, government, nonprofit, and other community services that can meet that need, really to make that, that link and exist as a safety net in our community. In the last year, we were able to help over 20,000 callers across the county and about 1,600 from Camarillo, including over 600 new callers. So that was a great combination for us, folks who are calling back, calling sometimes for themselves, sometimes for someone else, and sometimes because their situation... themselves, sometimes for someone else, and sometimes because their situation has improved in some way, and now they're looking for other resources, now that they've sort of come out of what's often some type of a crisis-type situation for them. You'll see, hopefully, hopefully you'll have a kind of a two-sheeter, front and back, that will give you a little bit of a snapshot of what callers from Camarillo kind of look like, what those calls look like in the past year. So our most common caller from Camarillo in the past year was an English-speaking person between the ages of 30 and 54. You don't see it on here, but usually more often than not, a woman, who heard about us from either a nonprofit agency or from a friend or family. On the back, you'll see what the requests were often around. And as, as you probably know with 2-1-1, we can handle multiple needs at the same time because we know that callers, community members, their lives are, can be complicated, needs can, can be complex. So these aren't necessarily all separate calls, but the most common need across the board was around housing, then around mental health or addictions. We also track if there was a need we couldn't meet because there just aren't services in the community that, that meant that person's specific need. The most common in the past year had to do with either housing or shelter. It's very common across our county. Housing is a large expense and can be something that can be very challenging for folks, also utility assistance and holiday programs. So we're proud to be able to do the work that we do across the county and for residents of Camarillo. We're located just down the road in Camarillo, if you ever want to come down and visit. And thank you so much for the support the city provides. We could not provide this service to the community day in, day out, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in over 150 languages, without the support provided by all 10 cities now, you'd be happy to know, as well as the county first five United Way. So thank you so much.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Little.
You folks do a great job and have continued to build that organization's support system up for the last several years, and I'm glad to have it happen. I'm just curious on this housing you said, and that, the graph shows that's obviously by far the largest issue. Is that for people looking for housing, people wanting support to continue to live there in whatever housing they may have, or what is, what are the, is there?
What falls under that?
Yeah.
Sure.
What, what is the largest concerns within that subgroup?
I'd be happy to actually provide more of a breakdown as well, specific to calls that we received from Camarillo around housing. It's a combination of, is everything from emergency housing? So that could be someone looking for homeless shelter, transitional housing, homeless motel vouchers, through low-cost housing, affordable housing, just on an ongoing basis. So if you, if you're interested, I would be happy to send more of the detail as well to the council.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Other questions? I just have one, one comment. You, where did this start?
2-1-1.
What city?
I know that you were, you were at Port Juaniemi as well recently.
Yes, I was. And I heard what you said. I want to hear the truth.
You know, I, my understanding is that both Camarillo and Port Juaniemi were early, early supporters of the 2-1-1 service. This predates me.
We were number one.
Number one.
You started right here. And you, you have your offices here in Camarillo.
We do, and we have since the beginning.
Yeah, because when I heard that, I'm in the audience, I'm going, ah, no.
We certainly appreciate the support from all the cities.
Yeah. But, but your service is fantastic, so we're, no matter where you started, how you did, you're doing great. So we're, we really like what you're doing. Yes, Kevin?
Is it about 1597 calls last year in the 2015 calendar year, is that right?
Yes. Now, callers don't have to give us their, their city of residence, so there's, there are additional callers who just chose not to give us that information, but those are callers who identify themselves as Camarillo residents.
So chances are, there's more callers than that do reside in the city.
Yes. Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Anything, Bill?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate your, your report. We'll see you again in another city. Okay. Okay, now we're going to move to departmental items. We have no public hearings.
Public comments?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, right. We have any public, yeah, we do. We have public comments on items that are not on the agenda. That's what we're looking at now. Ronald Vague, Va, Wang, okay, I'm sorry. Pretend, I mean, permit me, I mean, forgive me.
Sir, last time you called me Yang, okay? It's Wang. If it isn't victory, A-N-G. All right, I'm here to speak for the homeless, all right? I am, unfortunately, I had somebody buff, well, I'm just homeless, we'll go with that route. I'm still trying to see if you guys could do anything about the fire station that you have vacant for the longest time, 23 years if I'm not mistaken, to make it a homeless shelter. I live where I live, on the street, and all evidence to contrary, if you can see my face, yes. Recently, I just got punted disgustingly by a couple of kids, okay? For absolutely no reason, then I was laying down, and they came and beat the living you-know-what out of me. And I will come here every single time you guys have a meeting and speak for the homeless. I've tried to get my friends to come. Obviously, there's a whole lot of people on the street that do drugs. I myself do not. And there's a whole lot of people that are mentally challenged, physically challenged. I'm just challenged. And neither one of the boths. And I would like, if you guys would think about potentially opening up the fire station and making it a homeless shelter, all right? Somehow, some way, there are no homeless shelters in Camarillo. God bless each and every one of you, okay?
Can you hang on one second before you go any further? There may be some actions that you're going to approve. This is homeless shelter for the bad times and bad weather?
We have that. You take a bus and go someplace else.
No one takes it. We're doing something new. Would you like to hear about that?
I've heard that you potentially are going to try something. I'm.
Vouchers for hotels.
Pardon me?
Vouchers for two hotels.
I would love one, but I'll take one right now if you got it.
Well, it's not bad weather.
Unfortunately, don't worry about it. Hey, I live on the street, we've got great weather, but when it rains, it's no help scooting us out.
They will find you.
Pardon me?
Mr. Mayor, why don't you have one of the staff members explain to everybody out there in the audience what the city council just approved?
I, I heard, sir. I, I know exactly what you guys did, and God bless you for doing that, but for some other reason, I can't get the rest of the homeless, because a lot of them, like I say, are on drugs and mentally challenged, and I am neither, okay? So, well, I don't know if I'm mentally challenged, I'm not the smartest tool in the shed, but I still obviously am functional. So I'm just here to speak my mind for all my friends and constituents, I guess you could call it that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment.
God bless each and every one of you folks, because Ms. Craven, I've known you forever, no offense. Let's not go that route, okay? Just a couple days, we'll go that route. Mr. Morgan, I remember you a long, long time ago. I used to work for Al Avadision at Home Furniture. My very first job was delivering furniture.
Yep.
That was, we'll go with a couple weeks ago, okay? Because that was, we'll go a couple decades. How's that? But then again, that was kind of rude of me saying that, okay? Ms. Craven, I voted for you. Mr. Morgan, I voted for you. The rest of you, and Mr. Little, I've known you for a long time, no offense, but the rest of you, Kildee, gosh, I do, see, I can actually see a little bit. I got punted, so I'm having a hard time reading. Mr. Feng, you're new, I don't know you. I don't, and you're not new, I don't mean that rudely. I didn't know you. Ms. Burke, I didn't know you, but all of you, Ms. McDonald, I know you, Cadzooks. Well, we go five out of seven. Five out of seven I've known. The gentleman and lady that are sitting here, I've seen before, but, and my time is up.
Thank you very much.
God bless you kindly, and please think about it, for helping the homeless, okay?
Could I?
For some other reason, I'm the only person that speaks for them, okay?
Could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Have you been in contact with our police department and our Project Hope? Do you know about Project Hope?
I know all of it. I've got Pressiato, I know him.
Great guy.
He's a fantastic gentleman. He actually called me because I missed the ballot, whatever you want to call it, the, the tally they took.
Oh, okay.
Everybody was supposed to fill out.
Right.
There's a lot of people, like I said, that are out there that aren't mentally.
Right.
Feasible, but they're still on the street.
Well, work with him, because he's, it's a great program.
Pressiato's a fantastic man. He called me.
They're really there to help you.
Yeah, he, he actually called me on my phone. Now, unfortunately, I ran out of minutes on my phone, so I don't get to call him back.
He'll come find you, because he's, they really are, it's a great program, have people contact him, be in contact with the police department, because they really are there to help.
Young lady over here, yes, she's seen me before. Unfortunately, you probably have too. I'm a face a mother can love, and hopefully the rest of you can love you too.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. Terry Bray.
It's Terry for the agenda item?
Nope. It just says Habitat for Humanity.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, which comment card am I talking on right now?
You're talking on Humanity, Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity.
Because I entered two of them.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Terry Bray. I live at 63 Via Centra, Camarillo, California, Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park. I don't have anything written down, I'm just winging it, because my situation is this. It's been an ongoing issue with substandard, unlicensed work that was done in my mobile home that put me into a safety situation, as well as a health and safety violation per codes. And I've gone to the expense of $196, which is a big chunk for somebody that makes $1,250 an hour, to have an inspector of the Department of Housing and Community Development come out and verify the shoddiness of the work. And brought that to your attention, and I have not had anybody really from the city step up and take any action in regards to the operations of Habitat for Humanity, working as a general contractor, which they do not have a license. So I went to the extent of filing a complaint with the State Contractors Licensing Board. They followed through on the investigation, validated what I just said. Habitat for Humanity, as of two weeks ago, has not responded to the investigator via her texts or her phone messages, and she told me personally that if she is not dealt with when she walks into the office of Habitat in Oxnard on Rice Avenue by the individuals, the executive director, Mr. Stephen Dwyer, or the director, Felipe Flores, she was going to go immediately to the district attorney, of which she's going to be going there anyways. There was an inspection done by the California State License Board, and the work failed miserably. There's also safety issues that I was not even aware of. I have brought tonight packets in regards to that inspection. I previously gave you copies of the HCD inspection. I've also included photographs of the floor that was left available, the hole in the area, the improper mounting of hardware, and also a letter from a representative of Camarillo who originally assigned me to Habitat, Mr. Michael Smith, of all the things that the city was going to do to protect me that they did not do. So, as of around 4:30 this afternoon, I have filed a claim against the City of Camarillo, including the city manager, Mr. Feng, who is the signer on the contract with Mr. Dwyer, with Habitat for Humanity, all of you on the city council, Mr. Joe Vacca, Mr. Michael Smith, and others. So that's where I'm at. It's unfortunate that I have to make that announcement. The media has been alerted, and district attorney has been alerted, and also to the Attorney General, and a letter that I've received from Governor Brown, who is aware of the situation also, and is waiting to hear of what positive results may come from my personal efforts and also utilizing the state entities I've already mentioned. So what I have right here are copies for all city council, Mr. Vacca, and Mr. Feng. The copies include the filing that I made today for $1.5 million.
Okay, thank you very much. Our last speaker will be Matthew Lormer.
Matt Lormer, Lamp Lighter Mobile Home Park President. I have a few things to talk about tonight. Let me talk about number one. Terry Bray applied for a block grant through the City of Camarillo. The City of Camarillo has a responsibility, a city manager, he was supposed to follow state and federal laws. So what did we do? We signed a contract with Habitat for Humanity, who does not have a contractor's license, who did not pull permits and damaged Ms. Bray's house. Now, once that was made attention to the City of Camarillo, they considered, when we had a meeting with Mr. Joe Vacca, there was pressure for her to sign a contract. I was there. The idea that a city is supposed to follow state and federal laws and weren't followed, the city manager, on top of that, entered into a contract with an unlicensed contractor, and they basically allowed these people to do the work on Ms. Bray's house, and she has not had a working shower for six months. And let me remind you, this is just not talk. The Contractor State License Board, contractor failed to apply and obtain building permits for this remodel work prior to starting the work. Who's responsible? The City of Camarillo. You started this program, you should have followed through. Contractor failed to provide structural calculations, the new ceramic tile floor. Then we have HCD inspection. The contractor work was substandard, required a permit with a minimum of two inspections was not obtained as a violation of Title 25. Who's responsible for that? The City of Camarillo. The City of Camarillo doesn't get to pass a buck. They're supposed to take care of the citizens. And again, it's another form of lack of leadership with the city. Okay, let's talk about number two. The Camerillo Fiesta. I want to know the nonprofit status of this organization. I've been on there, seem to find it, and I'd like to know more. Maybe Mr. Morgan can fill that in, and also who the members are, because I can't seem to find that information. I'd appreciate that. The next thing I want to talk about, free mall security. The idea that a mall, $62.5 billion, $23 million in rent, and we're giving away over $22,453, that doesn't include staff time, free police services, is ridiculous. No other business in town receives that. It's outrageous, especially when crime is up 18%, violence assaults are up 33%. And by the way, I've talked to other police departments like the LAPD, they do not use their police force as mall security. They don't do that. It makes no sense, it shouldn't be done. And by the way, they can afford to pay this bill, and they should pay this bill, and it's ridiculous that the police department is using this manner. It's outrageous, it makes no sense, and shows a lack of leadership. That's all I have to say. I will take no questions at the evening.
Before we go, I, I'd like to have the commander come forward, is that okay? To talk about the last issue, about the security during Christmas time at shopping centers.
Well, this is not an agendized item. The Brown Act does allow a brief response, but it would have to be brief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. In a brief statement regarding the public comments from Mr. Lormer, we are responsible for the safety of our citizens on our public streets, and that's what we do as police officers and traffic officers. At that particular time, we had 11 calls for service that we responded to. We also had 18 citations, and we also had two pedestrian walkways that were fully staffed, so we had no accidents in that area. Bottom line is, we're needed to keep the community safe, especially when the amount of people comes in, it is close to 60,000 to 70,000 people.
You also have other bike patrols in some other centers at the same time?
Yes, sir. We also, it was my, under my direction that I said the Target Plaza, also Kmart, and Las Poses Plaza would also be extra patrolled at that time.
Yes, so we had during that time, it's for safety's sake for all centers, not just that one.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have departmental item, we have no other, any other comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to departmental items.
I've got a few comment cards on two different subjects.
We'll get to it.
This is the item coming up now that you're, you put it in for. Those others for non-agenda items. Hey, I'm glad you said that for once. Thank you. Departmental items, can we, who's taking this? Okay, this item is, is the ordinance amending the rent review, Chapter 1050 of the Camerillo Municipal Code.
Evening, Mayor, council members. As stated, the item tonight is consideration of a proposed ordinance that would amend Chapter 10.50 of the Camerillo Municipal Code regarding rent review. This is some proposed amendments that have been a long time in coming, and a lot of preliminary work has been done leading up to this point that I'd briefly like to recap. This was an item that was on the radar of the Council Policy Committee, and we had two very lengthy meetings, the latter part of last year, to review the ordinance, to discuss the potential changes tonight. And so what is before you is a collaborative effort of the Policy Committee that recommended this come forward, the city manager's office, the city clerk's office, which administers the program, and then our office too, which provides legal assistance in the program. the program, and then our office too, which provides legal assistance in the program. Brief background, our rent review chapter dates back to the early 1980s, when the commission was first established. At that time, the regulations were essentially a form of rent control in that the provisions provided for a recommendation by the commission, but if that recommendation was not accepted, then the parties could go to binding arbitration. So it was essentially a form of rent control. In 1999, however, the city council repealed the binding arbitration provisions and made some other changes, but what probably should have happened at that time was that additional provisions should have been removed because they were really related to the binding arbitration and don't really relate to what the process became after that date, was effectively a kind of mediation process, because it was a, or is, a recommendation by the commission that the parties can accept or not.
Can you tell them why we took, before, excuse me, before, can you tell them why we took that away, that binding arbitration? What reasons in those days we did that, or had to do that?
Well, I think the concern was about the rent control limitation. I wasn't here in 1999, but I think based on the minutes and other things, the issue is if you have a rent control and the, it goes to binding arbitration, because it's a city process, that decision could be subject to judicial challenge and appeals and litigation. And, yeah, there, and this topic's certainly been reviewed before by the council, but I think the council and the public is very aware that a lot of rent control provisions do lead to extensive litigation, not only over the adoption of the provisions, but also the decisions of the body, that whether it's a commission, or what kind of panel actually reviews the rents, those decisions are challenged, you know, by owners usually, whether they're getting a fair and reasonable return on their investment, which is the, you know, typical constitutional standard. So I think that was a big part of it.
Mr. Mayor, yes. I was here, and I can recall, there was a, seemed to me there was a decision, a court decision around that time, in the city of North, or in San Francisco area, I believe, or maybe Sacramento, and they had taken, and the court had ruled that that was in fact rent control, and therefore was challenged, and the city lost, and so the city attorney at the time made a recommendation that we modify it, and the city council at the time voted to do that.
Right, there were three of us here at the time that happened, and we saw that. It would have cost the city a lot of money, because that city, it was a lot of, that wasn't a million dollars, it was more than that, it was a lot. And so we changed, we had to. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's very appropriate. Thank you. So again, as I indicated, although the change was made to remove the binding arbitration part of it, there still remained a lot of provisions in the code. And I've been with the city since about 2001, and one of the challenges that I've always faced in working with the city clerk's office in handling the rent review matters was that there's inconsistent provisions in the code. But we have effectively treated the rent review commission as a kind of mediation forum, and essentially ignored some of these leftover provisions here, but it's, we feel it's time that they be removed, and so I think what we're trying to achieve with these proposed amendments is sort of threefold. One, to eliminate the vestiges of the rent control version of the ordinance that are still in place, to redesignate the process as what it really is, which is a mediation forum, that's supposed to be voluntary and non-coercive environment for parties to air their disputes and try to, you know, reach a resolution among themselves with guidance from the commission. And finally, as I'll discuss a little bit further, that with these changes, we are also proposing to expand the scope of application of the chapter, because as it currently exists, there was, the, the chapter applies to all mobile home park spaces in the city, but it cuts off apartment units at 1984. And I think that was because in the prior version, under state law, there were limitations if you have rent control on the date in which it can apply to apartment units. So newer units are generally exempted. So this is, again, was a vestige of the prior code, but since we are not technically doing rent control here, the Policy Committee felt that this would be appropriate to open up this forum to all potential tenants in the city, whether it's apartments or mobile home spaces. So again, mobile home spaces have all been covered, because they were all older and fell in within the purview of the chapter, but this would potentially expand the application to all apartment units in the city, particularly those that were built after 1984. So it's, the red, you've been provided with a red line in your package, and it is quite red. It may be easier to look at the clean copy and have the red line too of the new version to kind of see, but what I'd like to do is just sort of walk through section by section and hit on some of the key changes here that we're proposing. First is, we're proposing to remove a lot of the purpose findings, because they're really findings, and you don't need such extensive findings in something that's codified. Although we did take, if you look at the ordinance, what I call the kind of prefatory part of the ordinance, we did include those findings in the ordinance itself, because many of them are still very relevant, the fact that there is disparate bargaining power between tenants and landlords. That was true before, and it's very true now, particularly because we're facing, you know, housing shortages. There is not a lot of vacancy in the city, and so landlords really do have, continue to have great control over rent. So the, those findings and purposes have been removed, and we just have a more simple stated purpose, which is to establish a forum, to assist the resolution of disputes that may arise from time to time between tenants and owners. With respect to, and if, I don't know how you want to do it, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't you go page to page, so we can go right to where you're talking about?
Uh, well, this is Section 010, 10.50010, Purpose.
Big, big, big page. Big Page 20.
Page what?
Big Page 20.
Big Page 20. Okay, go ahead.
So I was going to say, as a matter of procedure, if you have questions on any particular section, feel free to either ask it as I go through, or we can do it at the end, whatever your preference is, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the definitions, we've done some cleanup here to reflect the mediation process, to update some of the terminology. Instead of calling them apartment complexes, we're calling them residential rental complexes, because you could have smaller units that may not typically be called an apartment complex. We're eliminating the phrase controlled rental unit, because we're not controlling rents in units. One of the key changes I want to bring to your attention, and we did receive some comments from one of our commissioners, Bart Stern, who's a property owner here in town, and he had several, I think, very helpful comments to make. One was with respect to, we have a definition in the proposed ordinance of a term called non-fixed term lease. And the intent of this section was to cover those leases where a rent could be increased, and it's not fixed in the lease what that rental increase would be. So the intent is to apply to month-to-month rentals, and it should have read leases 12 months or less, instead of less than 12 months. It should read 12 months or less, so Mr. Stern made a good comment on that, and we do support that change. And then the other situation where you could have tenants who have been on what we call fixed-term lease, let's say three or four years, and that lease term is coming up, and there's, they don't have a specified extension or a new rent, so they would also be subject to the availability of this forum, because again, their rent is not fixed in lease. For those, let's say somebody has a five-year lease, and they're in lease year number three, and their lease says you get a 3% increase every year. Our forum really isn't appropriate for that, because it's fixed in lease, it's a contract issue. But again, with the month-to-month, with the year-to-year, or with the long-term leases that are coming up for renewal, all those situations have rents that aren't really set by the lease, unless somebody enters into a longer-term lease. So that's important term, and that's who would be able to avail themselves of the proposed process. So I think those are some of the key changes in the definition section.
So that would be reworded to say, or number two, a lease that has been for a term of 12 months or longer?
No, it would read per.
And is about to expire within six months?
Uh, in your.
Because now it says longer than 12 months.
Right.
And I believe his point was, nothing included anything that was for 12 months.
Correct.
So it would say 12 months or longer?
No.
No.
What it should say is, we sent out a red folder, red line, it's a one-page.
We've gotten so many of them.
Document, I know, there's a lot. But basically, the change is, and there's two parts to it. The first part is, a lease is one, month-to-month, or for a period of, it currently reads less than 12 months, but it should read a period of 12 months or less. They're just moving, so it's 12 months or less.
Okay, I got it.
Because, because as Mr. Stern correctly pointed out, many leases are year-to-year. Yeah. Just a drafting mistake there.
And then the rest stays?
The rest would be the same, yes. So, and longer than 12 months, but the term's going to expire within six months. So there's a possibility that they're not covered by any specific rent increase provision.
Are we asking questions as we go along, or at the end?
Would you prefer, asking during that, during that time?
I think it's probably easier in the section, just helps to focus on that, if, but again, your preference.
We missed a part then. Looking at the red line, if you go back to the section just before definitions in the red line, there is something that was also addressed in a different letter, and the part that was removed is, it is necessary in the public interest that any rent dispute not resolved by the Rent Review Commission action be subject to judicial review. And I think we need to know why that was removed.
Well, we're proposing because that would, you know, create, again, a potential cause of action, it's more akin to rent regulation. Here, we're just providing a forum, we make, the commission makes a recommendation, here's what we think the appropriate rent is. If you can challenge it by judicial action, then you're basically saying the commission's recommendation is binding, it's city rent control, and so, again, it's what you were, and what Councilmember Little was saying, the reason why you repealed the section in 1999. And again, that section should have gotten dropped, you know, when that happened.
Okay. Well, I was asking, because we got a letter on that, and I thought it was important to not just skip over it.
Right.
Can I follow up on that, on that particular issue? But it, wouldn't it be true that we've got a mediation going here, but if indeed there was an issue that could, that could be taken to the judicial review at any time, and anybody can sue anybody, right? But it's outside of this, so it's not, it's not saying they can't do whatever they need to do.
Correct.
Outside of our system.
Our, this ordinance, both as it exists now and is proposed for amendment, if there are specific lease violations, somebody has a right under contract law to sue for that. And again, that's why we're trying to exclude ourselves from the provisions where the lease fixes how the rent is set, because again, that's in their contract. So if their long-term lease says you get a 3% increase, and they can notice a 4% increase, don't come to us, you can just go right, you know, up the road to Ventura County and sue, because you have a contract there, and we shouldn't put ourselves in the middle of that.
And I think that's important, because if the way I, the letter you're referring to, it made it sound like we were preventing them from having that ability to have a judicial review.
Right.
That is absolutely not true. They can still do that.
No, and I think, I'm not sure which comment that was, but again, there was some confusion, because some of these terms are still in here. It's in this particular provision, and then it's in here later too, about, you know, if you're dissatisfied, you can go sue, and those things should have been removed, you know, because it's confusing to the public, because that's not what the process is.
Not our process.
Correct. The intended process, anyway.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Stern also suggested that the words mediation be added in the definition of commission. Is that being?
Yeah, we also support that as well. We were thinking of recommending to you that we call this rent, rent review mediation, and then we would insert the term, and in fact, it is in many places. It says the rent review mediation process, so we think that's a good comment too, and again emphasizes that it is a mediation process. So yes, thank you for pointing that out, we do support that generic change. We're certainly open to, if you have better words to call the commission, you know, the rent review mediation commission's kind of long, but, you know, we, we at the same time feel that rent review is an appropriate term, because, you know, the city is focusing on the rent component, and that often does, Mr. Stern correctly points out, lead to other considerations, particularly conditions of properties, because that's often where the dispute lies. Sometimes it's a cost issue, but oftentimes it's a reduction of service, poor quality, poor maintenance of the facility. But that's, that's not excluded, but I think it's helpful, and it, you know, I think it's supportive of the tenants that we're really focusing on, you know, the rent component of the issue. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, one question. In most agreements on Mobile Home Park, you have, when you do an agreement with them, will it say in there, in that agreement, that the Mobile Home Park will, or whatever, will keep the place clean and whatever, usable and so on? Does it, is there any wording in their agreements that say that kind of thing, as part of the agreement with the renters?
You know, I'd have to look. I would assume that there are, you know, maintenance-type provisions, or, you know, maybe lists of services that are available, and so, for example, if the, you know, the lease lists, there's a laundry room, there's a pool, there's things.
If they're broken down, they're not providing it.
Or not provided, then again, I think there's a contractual issue.
With the court.
For the tenants as well.
Yep.
Yeah, potential legal action.
Okay.
Yes, a quick question.
Go ahead.
Just to make sure I understand what you just said. So anywhere that we call it a rent review commission, we're going to add rent review mediation commission? Is that what you're doing?
In some places, in most of the ordinance, we just call it the commission.
But anywhere we use the whole, we're going to add the word mediation.
Yes, yeah.
But we're leaving the word rent.
Yes.
So we're not going to.
Why are you leaving the word review?
We are.
You are?
Rent, review.
Mediation.
Mediation.
Mediation. So we're not going to mediate disputes over the neighbor's dog, or the, just popped him in the.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Let's move on. Oh, sorry.
I have, I spoke, so I need to make a statement here, because a lot of people know that my husband and I own rental units in Camarillo, and this very definitely defines the type of rental units we're talking, and it's an establishment that has five or more units. My husband and I have rental units in Camarillo, but none of them meet this criteria. I think it's important to tell people, because for other reasons, on other things, I've left because of that.
No, thank you for the disclosure, I think.
I have a question on the next one. We had just talked about non-fixed term lease. I have a question on rent, which is the next term, if we're there yet.
Which page, chart? You've got to keep us up.
Same page, 20, big 20. It's the next one down from non-fixed term lease, which we just discussed. It says, "Rent means consideration including any bonus, benefits, or gratuity demanded or received in connection with the use and occupancy of any habitable building or land, any residential rental unit or space, or for the transfer of a lease for occupancy." I think this term, "any habitable building or land," is confusing in here. I think it would be better if we deleted those words, "any habitable building or land", and if we added, so it would say, "an occupancy of a residential rental complex or mobile home park." Because those are the terms we define.
I agree with the proposal to delete that phrase, "any habitable building or land." I think, though, the, we do define residential rental unit.
Okay.
And space, so I would just leave those, because it is the individual units we're talking about.
Because this other habitable land, I don't know that we're really talking about that, we're talking about the res, mobile home spaces.
I would agree, that's another vestige, and as we continue to go through it, there are little things. I also think, and as I look at this too, that the last phrase really isn't really needed either, transfer of a lease for occupancy. So I would propose we. So I would propose we strike that part, too.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, okay.
So what, tell us again what we're taking out?
We would take out, I don't know if it's easier to, what's taken out, we would take out in the second line, after "use and occupancy of," we would take out the phrase, "any habitable building or land." So it just reads, "occupancy of any residential unit or space."
Period.
Period.
That's it. Mm-hmm, that's better.
Very good suggestion.
Okay, any other questions, so we can move on? Go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the commission. Again, here is another example where what we were doing in practice, and what was in the code, there were some disconnects here, and we're also kind of recommending to streamline both the composition and the process itself. So currently, 11 commissioners are appointed, and you have the division there, two, two for the parks, two for the tenants, two for owners of residential rental units, and two for the tenants of those, and then two alternates. So we're, and then three members of the general public. We're proposing, the, the commission, you know, meets once or twice a year. We don't feel that we need two alternates, they rarely have to serve, so we're recommending the, the number be reduced by that amount. Also, in practice, too, what's happened is that the, excuse me, if there's a dispute involving a apartment unit, that some of the mobile home people don't attend, but there's no real reason for that. They all are tenants, they all are owners, they all understand the issues. So we're kind of eliminating that difference between the two, and having, you know, both tenant representatives from mobile homes and apartments be present, as well as the owners, too. We think they have valuable input, so we would suggest that all seven representatives attend, instead of just the current five here. There was no fixed terms in the current ordinance, so we're proposing, you know, the terms would be for four years as well.
Can they be reappointed?
Of course, yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, just subject to your typical appointment power. We've had, actually, the ones that have been serving have been longstanding members, too, so they've definitely expressed dedication, but we felt it was appropriate, just like in all commissions, to have a fixed term stated.
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
If you don't have alternates, and you need to have a meeting, so what's a quorum? I guess I'm, let me ask you.
The quorum is going to be five, so, so it leaves some room for a couple of people to not be present. But we are requiring at least one owner and one tenant representative to be present, too, so you couldn't stack the deck, and only the owners showed up one day, and then said.
And is this the position, we've had a hard time filling, the alternate position?
Okay.
Okay, let me make that easier.
So as long as you can't stack the deck one way or another, because somebody's not available, or we lose a commissioner in between hearings or so forth?
Right. No, it's all evened up, and then we also clarified that there should be a residency requirement for the members-at-large, that wasn't stated as well. Obviously, the tenants are all residents, and we don't require residency under the proposed provisions for the owners, because their connection is, they own the park, they didn't, don't have to live in the city of Camarillo to serve.
Okay.
Okay, so those are the proposed changes to the commission. We provided a, in the past, the ordinance has to be handed out to all applicable tenants, so you're passing out a lot of paper to people. In the Internet age, we feel it's easier that just the owners, when they're noticing a rent increase, that they have to just provide notice that, oh, there is this forum here that's available, if you don't like it. And we're also proposing that they post something on their property as well, to address the situation, then the ordinance is readily found on the city's website.
But that's the full ordinance that has to be posted?
No, just a notice, notice of availability.
Of the hearing.
The notice of the hearing and something about the ordinance has to be, or the process has to be posted, doesn't it?
Well, if you look at Section 040, Councilmember Craven, that kind of has the boldface what it says, and it says, "The city of Camarillo has a Rent Review Commission." We'll change that to Rent Review Mediation Commission, "that provides a voluntary, non-binding mediation forum to review rent increases. Copies of the city's rent review chapter are available upon request at our office or may be obtained at City Hall."
So they are there on the office?
Yes, sorry. Yes, they would have something at their office.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Well, and if it isn't, if they don't have an office for some reason, then someplace on the property.
Then they have to post on the property. Well, we just have them posting the notice, not the whole ordinance.
But it tells them where to get the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Back under C, under 10-503030, it has powers and duties, but I noticed that all the duties were removed. Maybe we should just say powers? It's right above 040.
Don't you have a duty to act?
It doesn't say that.
Empowered to act, isn't it?
Yeah.
But isn't that your duty, once you're commissioner, you have to do this?
It says your power is, the commission is empowered to act. It doesn't say your duty is.
Well, that is.
It had a whole bunch of duties that are taken away as duties of the commission, and some of those things other people have to do now.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if we appoint someone to it, it's their duty to do what they're appointed to do, not just their power to do it. In other words, we appoint people expecting them to act, not just if they feel like it. I think, that's why I just kind of read the, picked up both. I guess you could add a word in there if you wanted to.
It's a fair point. I think it's assumed that their, their duties are, you know, inherent in what's, you know, to carry out the purposes of the chapter, to issue a recommendation, to hold the hearing, so I do think they have duties, even if it's not, we only use the word empowerment.
Right. I think, Charlotte, I think it sounds okay. Why don't you look at it a couple of times?
Okay, I'm just looking at it.
Okay. Any other questions? Kevin?
Yeah, Dawn, on, this is kind of a housekeeping. On the docket, it says, "The city clerk will maintain a record of all mediation proceedings conducted before the commission." Would that be in accordance with state law? In other words, do we keep those documents in perpetuity, or would they follow what state law requires us, the length of time that we do have to keep a document?
Well, there's no actual, and this is more a historic thing, I guess I'll defer to our clerk as to what the records retention period would be for those records.
So the, the docket we have been maintaining, it goes back to the dawn of time, actually, the very first petition that was ever filed. But all the docket contains is what complex was involved, who was the petitioner, what the outcome was. Then for each individual petition, there is a file, of course, which is the record for that hearing, and that's subject to our retention schedule. And so after a period of time, that information goes away, but the docket is retained permanently.
Okay, okay. So we would, based on what I heard the clerk say, we would keep the actual file for at least two years, because that's our minimum, perhaps longer, but probably not more than five or seven. So maybe some of the older cuneiform proceedings from the dawn of time might have been destroyed.
Okay. Other que, keep going, then.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the procedure section, 050. Again, an attempt to streamline things. One of the things that we did after hearing from the tenants, one of the complaints about the current process, is that if there is a rent increase that affects 50% or more of the tenants, then 25% of the tenants have to join in a petition. That sounds daunting, although based on past experience, they have actually met those or exceeded the signature requirements, but still, we felt that that was unduly burdensome here, so we tried to strike a compromise at the committee, and so it's proposed that if a increase will affect 25% or a quarter of the tenants, that they need to get at least five similarly situated people. And we felt that, you know, having at least some validation from a few other tenants would be important, so it's not just a one of, a disgruntled person, but really that there were other people that shared that concern, but five seemed a very manageable number. So we think that's something that will make it certainly less burdensome on tenants to request the availability of the forum. Otherwise, things are pretty much the same. We are encouraging, because we've had problems in the past with submissions of materials at the day of the meeting, which doesn't give either side much chance to look over things, so we're requesting that people provide, you know, their information in advance, seven days in advance. You're not going to be thrown out if you don't, but it, it makes the process more fair and allows, you know, for, you know, greater review if both sides would cooperate with that, so we will certainly encourage that in the future.
Excuse me. What if, what if one or the other parties consistently do not meet that timetable, what happens?
Well, we, we waived it and dealt with it. I think the commission is typically, if the material is late, or if it's deficient, that's certainly raised by the commission, that, you know, on, on either side. So if a park owner's requesting a increase and, you know, provides two pages of information, then that's often pointed out, that, you know, that there's really not evidence there to support, you know, what they're doing. So they have to face the public forum, that they haven't really complied with it, but we've never imposed a strict, you know, time requirement, that you, you've waived any rights, we're not going to allow you to testify, that sort of thing, that's not really, you know, the purpose of the forum, but I think the commission's been very clear when people don't live up to providing, you know, the type of information. I know that's a, you know, concern that we've heard from the tenants, I think there, there's a validity to that point about information, but, you know, also, we can't require reams and reams of information, every check to validate everything. I think the commission has a good sense of how detailed information is, and how supportive it is of the request, and if it's on the weaker side, that that's pointed out, and same on the tenant's side, too, although it's a little bit easier on the tenant's side, it's usually a, you know, comparison about how much rents have gone up, it doesn't require as much detail, but where tenants have had condition issues, it's, it's been helpful, and they typically have provided pictures or some other documentary evidence of conditions that they're concerned about. So we're just trying to get them to provide in advance, but at the same time, we want these things to happen relatively quickly as well. So we're kind of trying to balance all the interests.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions about the procedural aspects?
Charlotte?
Yes.
Back on the first paragraph request for mediation, I think this is real clear to those who read a lot of legalese, but just for the record, could you, you talked about what happens if 25% or more of the tenants with a non-fixed lease receive a notice of rent increase. What happens if one person does, or two?
Then they have the right to file their request for mediation, so it's only them.
Just them, they, they can go ahead on their own and file it.
Yep, yeah, if it's a unique thing, if it's just them. The reason, they're twofold, and you'll, you'll see, if you look in Part B, too, when you have a rent increase, it's going to affect a large number of people, we ask the owner to identify those people, so that they're given notice that, look, there's going to be this hearing, because we don't want to have the same hearing 18 times, you know, that, because oftentimes they do rolling rent increases, you know, it's not in a big block, it's, they'll, they'll.
As rent, as.
10 people in January.
As years, as contracts come up.
As the year goes on, exactly. So we've tried to do it in the past, that, to, you know, incorporate, you know, this, those, the, the group, and to find out, okay, what are you doing here? Is everybody getting this, or is this something unique here? And if it's a more unique situation, as you indicated, then they don't have to get the signature requirements, they can just, you know, avail themselves of the, the forum.
Your Honor, I have one more.
Go ahead.
One more thing. In the next, well, I guess the question then would be, we ask the landlord to provide the names of those who will be receiving this rent increase, or some rent increase in the future, to, if it looks like it's going to ma, be, be something like that, like a lot of them. And then in the next section C, it says, submissions by the owner. If the owner agrees to participate in the rent review mediation, then at least, and you explained that it, what they were going to be asked to submit, somehow, these two things go together to make this sound just really wishy-washy, and I think the question would be asked, then, why do we do this at all, if they have the option and there's no reason for them to participate, really?
I don't quite.
The owners.
Yeah.
Oh, the owners.
Oh. Well, because we're not compelling them, that was something discussed at the policy committee. I mean, that is one way the council could go, is to require them to go, but that may be counterproductive to, you know, the mediation forum, where people need to be, you know, at least open to discussing the situation. I think, to be honest, the, the way it's worked, and we've never had a park owner not attend, in my experience, because I think that's the, the beauty of this being a city commission, as opposed to, let's say you appoint, you know, one individual who's kind of a mediator, I think having, you know, that, that commission, and that these are your appointees, I think it makes it more incumbent on the park owners to at least show up and to participate in the process, whether it's grudgingly or openly. So we've just not had the issue, but if it's the council's prerogative, it could be something, you could compel somebody to attend, but as I said, they may just sit there for an hour and be silent. I mean, we can't compel them to talk, we can't compel them to be open-minded.
How can you even compel them to attend? What's the, what's the penalty if they don't?
You, you could impose some penalties. Some of the codes that we looked at actually do compel people, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a health and safety regulation, so you could potentially fine somebody for not showing up, you know, at, at a situation, but, you know, we didn't push that point, because we hadn't had the issue here, so.
And the other thing we talked about at the committee was, is if indeed you had this situation, and the owner chose not to show up, I would assume you'd go forward, and if they don't, aren't there to present anything, well, it certainly makes the decision one-sided. So it would be in their best interest to show up.
So, Kevin?
Well, they're not obligated to follow the.
That's right.
So that's what I, that's where I'm going. They're not obligated to follow the recommendation, and indeed, some recently haven't, or one at least hasn't, and so why go through the whole process if we have no teeth in it?
But we've never had teeth in it.
Well, we did at one.
We did it one time in 1999.
Ninety, whatever.
Ninety-nine. But we haven't for 15 years, and, you know, we have had a number of successful ones, where parties got together, they worked it out, and I think that's what the intent here is. I mean, those, those are fair points, but you either have a voluntary forum, or you have, you know, a kind of coercive rent control situation.
Mr. Mayor, seems to me that we ought to at least try this approach, and if, if we run into some, some issues down the road, we go back and revisit it.
And I think along those lines is, tell us what has changed between what the practice has been, not what was the wording, but what the practice has been with what you now have in the ordinance.
Well, what is in the ordinance has been the practice for the past 15 years. And as I said, we have not had a single park owner fail to appear, and we've not had any tenants who asked for it, failed to appeal either, and the code, both now and in the future, though, does provide, if somebody doesn't show up, we just proceed without them, and, you know, their loss, and, you know, there'll be a public recognition about, you know.
Well, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself, so let's finish this, and then I'll give my thoughts.
Yeah, let's get, let's finish this first, before we start.
But the main thing in this section is, is nothing has really changed from practice.
Correct.
No.
Correct.
Go ahead.
Okay. Along those lines, the next section is the considerations. Again, those are basically identical considerations, we've just, it was kind of formatted as one big lump of a paragraph, and we broke them out into individual ones. Mr. Stern had a comment on this one, on subpart I here, fair and just return on the property to the owner being a consideration. He would like the inclusion of comparable rents in the area, and as I discussed with him, that is a. is a consideration within this criteria. But, I had no objection to specifying it. And so, in our red line, we are proposing to include, including comparable market rents within the city is just additional consideration under that factor, because we have always looked at that consideration.
In this case, it could either benefit or be negative toward the certain owner we're talking about, if the others are so much lower.
Yes.
The comps would then show that person, which is, I think that's fair.
Yeah. It's a reasonable consideration. Again, showing what the market is. So, again, no objection to that one. Otherwise, it's, again, pretty much the same. Same with the recommendations. Again, more just wording changes to reflect the mediation. But, at the end of the hearing, the commission has always issued recommendations or followed up within a five-day period with a written recommendation based on their oral direction to us.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Building?
Can I ask a real quick question, if you don't mind?
Thanks.
The fair and just return to the property owner, is that based on comparable rents in the area, or is that a CPI, or is it a combination of both of them, or can it really be that finely defined, if you will?
Yeah. It's actually a legal term of art that's sort of, kind of flexible. Fair and just return. Well, what does it mean? You know, somebody makes an investment in the property, they're entitled to a certain return. But, you have to look at a whole range of considerations as part of that. So, in part of, in almost all of the hearings that we've had, certainly CPI is certainly raised and looked at, you know, what cost increases. But, more than CPI, because you actually look at what expenses have occurred. Was there something, you know, unusual in the park? Were there capital improvements that have gone in, in different things? So, you really look at all these factors here. And then, you know, the landlord's entitled to state, too, well, look, you know, I've invested this much money. I'm losing money. We haven't heard that argument. But, that's something that they could state, because they are entitled to some kind of return on things. And that's typically why they're asking for an increase.
Okay.
Okay. Also, I wanted to point out, too, Mr. Stern, another comment, too. There's a sentence at the bottom of Section 060 about the condition, commission not supporting rent increases based on change of ownership, increased cost of debt, service, or taxes. Mr. Stern made the point, and I think it's valid, that, and particularly with the Lamp Lighter property, because that was sold, and property owners do sell their properties from time to time. And what happens is that Prop 13 kicks in, and the properties do get reassessed, and the taxes do go up. And so, I think that is something that, usually, that's not been the sole basis of an increase. But, it certainly is a fair consideration where a park's been sold. So, in the red line, we are proposing that the change of ownership and the tax language be stricken, because that would be just something that naturally occurs when there's a sale. But, debt service is something that somebody can control. And we don't feel that just going out and leveraging your property the max and, you know, increasing rents based on a new mortgage in and of itself would be a proper approach. So, we kind of cut that out.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
That one's kind of bothering me, because if you're going to go out and buy a mobile home park, you need to take all of that in consideration when you buy the property. And that shouldn't automatically allow you to raise the rents in order to cover that. If your own performer doesn't allow you to cover that increase, I'm not sure that should be on the backs of the tenants or the... That one's just kind of bothering me. That change of ownership, you control. If it doesn't work out for you, you don't buy it.
But, on the other hand, that is covered by just saying solely by a change in debt service. Because, change in ownership, under what you're saying, is because the cost of the debt service is higher. So, what we changed it to say is, even if an existing owner went out and refinanced, so he could go buy something else, which he's not supposed to do anymore. But, at any rate, if he did, he can't solely ask for a rent increase solely based on that debt service.
And you know what?
Which this didn't address in the past.
Actually, there are two separate things. So, you're right. You should have that as a separate item. But, I don't believe that they can, you can support a rent increase solely because you have a new owner and you have a new assessed valuation.
I think that's what this says under...
No, but they've changed it, the one I'm looking at.
Well, I like the old one.
I can see what you're saying. They could go out and refinance their loan and say, oh, jeez, now I can't make my mortgage payment, so therefore, I have to do it. That's perfectly, you know, I agree with that.
I like the old one.
But, I think it's, we still need the old one as well.
Yep. So do I.
I think that that can be left in. It does state solely. And so, you know, they would have to have much more than just that.
They'd have to have something else. Right.
Yes, to do it. So, I think it is appropriate to leave, or you could...
And then add the section on, only on...
What happens if, what happens if you go out and buy, you don't know what they're going to assess it at when you buy it. They could come in and assess it at, well, three or four times the value and taxes. It's not a question that they, I guess they could go down and ask the assessor what you're going to assess it at, but that doesn't...
On the purchase price.
Normally, you get an appraisal when you buy what you're going to buy. So, you know what's worth what you're buying. So, you'd have a pretty good idea what the assessor office is going to do.
Well, you know what you're going to buy, but you don't know what taxes are going to, what the assessor is going to assess that.
Well, they should be pretty...
Should be. You should be able to figure that out.
If you've got the appraisal and the price, you should be able to go down and get something from this county.
Well, it seems to me that's a legitimate, something to be taken into account for.
But, not solely for those reasons.
Not solely.
And that's, I think, the key word here that makes it okay for both sides. That it just, you can't do it just because you come in and buy the park, and now I got to pay my investment.
Do I hear three of you saying, just leave it like it was?
But, I would support adding the part about change in, not because of the change of ownership, but refinancing. That does create another situation where your debt service changes.
Well, that is in the current language, too.
It is. That's in it.
Increased cost of debt service.
Yep.
But, that's based on a change of ownership.
No, it isn't. It says, based on a change of ownership, that results in...
Yeah. It's poorly worded.
Ownership and...
Okay.
Okay.
Or refinancing the property. I don't know. But, some way to cover both pieces.
I understand the...
What will it read like? What will, well...
Well, I think we need to add a separate clause, because it currently reads, change in ownership that results in increased cost of debt service or taxes. Or, actually, just, I'll have to figure out the wording. But, the intent is, you know, a change in debt service, not related to a change in ownership.
Yes.
There you go.
Why not just delete the words, a change of ownership that results in, and it would just read, increased solely by reason of increased costs of debt service?
But, the ownership change on your taxes is an important piece versus taxes going up normally.
Yeah, for other things.
So, you get that big reassessment when you...
But, wouldn't this apply to both, whether it was a change of ownership, or for whatever reason?
That's what I thought, if we stuck it the other way. No, because if you took the ownership out, then you, under Prop 13, you would have your little bit of increase. This would only apply on that change of ownership, when you get that huge reassessment of value.
You'll come up with wording on that to reflect what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does that mean if he refinances the note, is that what we're...
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. That if you refinance, you can't just come in and say, gee, I need that rent increase, because I refinanced, and, you know, I'm paying much more now.
Yeah. Borrowed on it.
And I bought another one.
Bought a new house for myself.
Okay. So, that's, I think that's fair. So, you'll come back with appropriate wording?
Yeah.
Okay.
Something like, or a change in debt service based on refinancing, because that's, refinancing is not changing the ownership.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Recommendation of commission.
Always something new. The recommendation part is really, as I was starting to say, pretty much identical to what's done now. I think we have language here, too. The clerk will submit copies of the recommendation to the council, so you're aware of all these proceedings here. And then, the last...
I just have one thing on A, and it's kind of a small nitpicky thing. But, in the second line, I think it should read, proposed rent increase is fair, comma, equitable, comma, and necessary. So, just get rid of this first and.
That's true.
If you're going to have three things, you don't need two ands.
Nope.
But, fair and equitable is a...
That's a term of art, but it can still be fair, equitable, and necessary.
Yeah. Let's reduce that.
I agree.
You okay with that?
Either way, it works.
I'm good with that.
Fair and equitable is...
It works either way. This just shortens it some. Necessary, or okay. Next?
That's it, for me.
Okay. And then, we have a proposed new section. There was a kind of a anti-retaliation in the old one. That didn't really make much sense. And what we've done here is a more updated anti-retaliation period. There's actually provisions in the Civil Code that protect, you know, against waivers of rights. So, when somebody's exercising a certain right, and, you know, and probably more likely, an owner would try to subvert the process by telling the tenants, I don't want to go in there. I'm going to throw you out if you go to that mediation process. So, that is the one thing, actually, where we created kind of a legal right, if somebody abuses that process. And they could make a claim under our ordinance against the party subverting the process.
Any other questions?
And then, the final, that is per the staff report, there are a number of just deletions, too, here. And I'll just, I can either go through them, or I think you can read them. They're on page three of the staff report. There are a number of sections that we're deleting that are, again, the vestiges of the old system.
Okay.
Okay. I would add, and I think you have, well, I didn't see your red folder package, but we did provide this to the Rent Review Commission. You saw Mr. Stern's comments. But, also, Chair, Linda's name is hard for me to pronounce, but Bratchweiger.
Brunchweiger.
Reviewed and supported, as did Co-Chair Mitch Krieger as well.
Good. Let everybody know who this is, who these people you're talking about are, so the public knows these people, what organization they're part of.
Mine's on...
We know, but the public doesn't.
These are members of our Rent Review Commission. They're the chair and co-chair that I just mentioned. And Mr. Stern is the commissioner.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one more question. It's not really a question, but can you just sum it all up in just a sentence or two? What really has changed between practice in this ordinance?
Okay. Again, what we've attempted to do here is to re-condify our existing practice, that for the past 15 years, we've essentially had a non-binding voluntary forum that is akin to mediation, without calling it that. We're going to call it that now. The process is essentially the same, with actually greater access to tenants, because we've reduced some of the thresholds for petitions here, and gotten rid of, again, some of the inappropriate legalisms from the prior rent control ordinance. So, that's in a nutshell.
You've also added all the apartments built since 1984.
And we've, thank you very much. And we've expanded the potential protections and the availability of the forum to a significant segment of the population.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Stick around. You might have to answer some.
I will be here.
Okay. Now, we have the public, public part of this. I'd like to call Matt Lormer first.
Well, first of all, you canceled two meetings.
Matt, can you move back from the phone a little bit? It gets kind of...
We got a new speaker.
We got a new speaker, and it just really blasts.
You stopped my time, then. You just...
No, no. Just back up from the speaker a little bit. It's killing us up here. Boom.
More time.
Now go.
Okay. First of all, the meetings were canceled, two of them. I think we need more time. I think it was canceled in holiday time. I think we should be given more time before anything is moved forward, because we do have some concerns. And let's talk about what has gone wrong. Camarillo is the worst point in history. And I'm going to tell you, the rents now to move in the mobile home park, it's $1,275. Cable would be $1,214, sewer $2988, trash $2445. So, move-in would be $1,342. Five years ago, the park was bought by IPG. That's $592.02. Do you think your citizens in this community would allow you to raise, would allow them to have fees raised in the city like this? This is outrageous. Okay? It's outrageous, because the person who bought this park has one intention and one intention only, to get rid of the people, to make it in a rental park. And you know something? If you live around Lamp Lighter, you're going to have a lot of problems in the future. Okay? But, the idea that we're going to just say that somehow, the Rent Review Board works, let me remind you what you said. You know, I came here for over the years complaining about what was going on with this owner. You said, for 30 years, it's worked well. Well, guess what, folks? It didn't. Maybe you should stop thinking like you were 30 years ago, because I went to that. You told me I should go. And you know something? I went, and I kicked their ass, excuse the expression. I got a 1.7. And you know what the owner said? He said, residents on long-term leases would be unfairly punished and discriminated against for working with the park manager, ensuring a peaceful environment. Then, a review hearing was already held to the next increase, December 2, 14. So, we agreed to all terms, although the residents did not. Decision was already determined at that time, and we do not agree with having a second hearing. Oh, yes, you did. You showed up. I cleaned your clock, showed you weren't maintaining the park like you still don't maintain the park. You didn't like the findings, and you walked away. The idea that you're passing this buck and portraying to the city that somehow, you're doing the city a service by continuing the same service, isn't working. Okay? Imagine. No other place has seen this kind of significant rent increase. $592. You guys are the people, supposed to represent the people in this community. You know something? If you live in apartments, if you live at homes, this city council's sending a clear message. We don't care about you. We don't care anything about you. You know, if you want to contest rent, go ahead. If they want to show up, fine. But, you know the reality, they're not going to. It's unacceptable. And you know something? It's disgraceful.
May I ask a question, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Lormer, we had a meeting in which we had a meeting, and you did participate in it. Several of the members of your park did. We had a second meeting, and no one showed up. Can you tell me why?
I can tell you why. You had it twice. How many meetings did you cancel? How many meetings did this city council?
I have one, according to the city clerk.
Okay. Once.
And then, and it was rescheduled, and no one came. We asked the city clerk where you were. We were told you were all notified. And we asked, did he call? And the answer was no.
I can't find that email. And you know something? A couple of us weren't all notified. Let me remind you that some of the people who showed up at that meeting didn't get an email. Okay? And let me tell you something.
Let me ask this, I'm sorry, I'm asking the questions now. You had your three minutes. And the city clerk, were they notified?
Did you put a public notice out to the public and the newspaper that you were going to make changes to?
The original meeting was canceled in September, and we rescheduled the October meeting, six weeks out. And they were notified six weeks ahead of time of the October meeting. And then, they were notified of the October meeting the week before the October meeting.
Was there a public notice put in the paper?
There is a public notice under public notice laws, that we have to notice all of our committees.
That's right. Posted outside and on the website.
Another question I have for you. You, through all this process, and you've been coming here for years, in maybe the first third of it all, you formed a homeowners' association. I would like to hear at some point in time what this homeowners' association is doing in the park, because that's what a homeowners' association is supposed to be doing, is dealing with the issues with the park owner.
You're right, Jan. You're right.
So, why isn't that working? That's bothering me.
Well, I'm going to tell you what. We did work, Jan. You know why? The only way to protect the residents was have a rent stabilization ordinance. But, wait, wait, Jan. You asked a question, so I'm going to respond to you.
Okay.
You gotta allow me now. Come on. The thing is, we, looking at this issue on a statewide level, what has been going on, and what was going on here, we pursued a rent stabilization ordinance. And obviously, you guys didn't want to move forward with that. Then, we moved forward on seeing, we asked for a reduction in the amount of signatures to go to the Rent Review Board. And now, you want to hack it up. And you said on the books that you had some form of rent stabilization in this thing. Okay? And it was prior to the owner owning this park, because Mike Morgan has mentioned that, that it somehow was in there. So, why change that part? Why not leave it alone? Nobody's been sued for that. You can find some legal briefings, Mr. Brian Perk. You can share with us regarding cities being sued for that content being in there. Maybe you should bring that forward.
You've answered my question.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to make a couple more points here. First of all, we have deep... First of all, we have decreased the number of signatures that are required, not left it alone, and not increases, so it has been decreased.
I agree on that, yes.
So if you read this, you'll find that's fine. And the other thing, I'm just going to give you my two cents worth, because I'm getting a little tired of hearing about it, but it seems to me that if I was the homeowners' association, and you had one point of the way you hoped to go, and it didn't work out, instead of just complaining about that, you'd go over and you'd figure out how to solve some of the problems in a different direction.
Jan, that's why we're here.
So, it can all be us, because the homeowners' association and the owners ought to work together, so if there's something we can do to bring you together, then that's what we're here for.
Well, other city councils protect the residents, and, and they have a rent stabilization ordinance.
That, that isn't happening right now, so we got to figure out a way to get you all to work together, and this is what we've got at the moment.
Well, Jan, you explained to me how $592, you think it's fair in five years, you tell me another city that has had an increase like that with their residents.
Actually, there are, and you can, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be arguing, but you can even look at rent control stabilizations.
Well, can you provide me with those mobile home parks?
Matt, 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 let her finish her sentence.
No, I'm not arguing, she asked me, what I'm saying is, if you're saying that other parks in Ventura County have had a $592 increase, maybe you can tell me right this moment the name of those parks, Jan.
I don't know them off the top of my head, but we'll get them to you.
There you go, you should do your research.
Time out, staff will get that for you. No more, no more.
Mike, I have one other question.
Not from him.
I have, well, maybe staff can answer this.
It's time to get called on these things, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired of hearing about it.
Maybe staff can answer this, I, I'm not really familiar with a rental park, does that mean that they don't own the coaches, that they rent?
He's talking about a mobile home park.
Yep.
They, they rent the mobile, the coaches and space.
So nobody owns the coach?
No, some own the coaches, they're renting the spaces.
What's that?
Park owner owns the coaches.
And then rents...
So they, the park owner owns the coaches and the dirt that it's on.
No, 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 a lot of the coaches are owned by the people there.
No, 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 he's...
No, but I'm asking what a rental, yeah, a rental park, does that mean when the owner owns both? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. That's when they get rid of the owners, you're correct. Okay, Terry Bray.
It's better not to ask these, this just goes on, he gets...
All right, Terry Bray, homeowner at Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park for over 30 years, I am the president of the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League, Chapter 616, Lamp lighter. There's a few things in here, but overall, what I had heard earlier, which I greatly appreciate, is the fact that even though these revisions have come along and have streamlined the Rent Review Board policy and procedure, it does not have the teeth that we need for empowerment of the homeowners to defend themselves against rent gouging. The owner of our park is well-known for that, for the many parks that he owns in the state and in other states. According to Investment Magazine, and also in the Californian, produced by GSMOL this month, one of the number-one investments now for capital, venture capitalists and such, is mobile home parks. Why? Because they're cash cows, they're guaranteed an income. If somebody's on that space, they have income. If they abandon that space because they can't afford the rent, the bank that owns it pays the rent. If that is, an item that is walked away from, bank relinquishes it, owner of the park is entitled legally to own that unit, and rent it out to whoever they want, with no background checks, which puts us in a safety situation. How do we know we don't have a child molester, or a rapist, or somebody in our park? We don't know, they don't have to produce anything, that that person can, you know, legally live there, but if we apply to live in the park, we have to have a background check, every adult in that unit has to have a background check. There's a lot of holes in what I heard, and I probably am going to run out of time, but a fair and just return, like was what was mentioned earlier, within the city of Camarillo, there are two parks in this city that are resident-owned units and pay space rent, Casa del Norte and Lamp lighter. The rent at Casa del Norte, with their $50 increase, is $690 a month. We're at $1,275 just for the space. Then think about the mortgage, we are homeowners, we are investors, to compare us to apartment residents is apples and oranges, they have no investment, they don't like it, they want to bail, they get a U-Haul trailer, they move out in the middle of the night, they're gone. We're stuck. We have no empowerment to stop the rent raises that continue in our park. As far as achieving the necessary signatures in the past, that took several hours by many people canvassing the park over a period of several days. Why people don't come here? They're working families. Why are they not at the Rent Review Board meetings? They're during work time. The last time I saw a notice of a meeting, I think it was at 8:30, excuse me, again, 12:50 an hour, I have to take off work to attend a meeting to try and protect my investment. I can't attend. So if you really care, make those meetings at times when people can't attend, and not cost them out of their pocket.
That's a good idea.
I just have one correction.
Evening meetings.
We did request it at the meeting I attended, and Jan, you had brought that up as well, but that was not honored.
Evening meetings would be better.
I think that's good, I think that's something we should...
Yes, I do too.
So I appreciate you validating that, because I, I hear that as an invalid complaint that we don't attend, it's not that we don't want to, but let's deal with reality, and it's a family park, two people working to support their family, plus the rent increases and such, it's extremely expensive to live there.
Okay, we put a little check there to look that up, so we can try to encourage that, Terry.
Okay.
Just for the record, there are three where people do not own their mobile homes. Camarillo Mobile Home Park, you don't own your own lot.
You're talking about Camarillo Springs?
I'm talking about the one on Ventura Boulevard.
Ventura Boulevard.
On Ventura, Ventura Boulevard, as I understand, not too long ago, I think that's still owned by Scott Hughes.
I don't know who owns it, but you don't...
Was going to, going to what they call condominium.
He never has done that.
No, it hasn't gone forward.
It didn't go through.
No.
Then I stand corrected. One, one thing I wanted to mention, that hasn't been brought up, City of El Monte passed a rent stabilization ordinance last year, affecting 22 of their parks. Ken Barr presented the same information that the residents of Lamp lighter paid for to present to you, to consider a rent stabilization ordinance. How did the City of El Monte feel comfortable enough to protect 22 mobile home parks and not be frozen by the fear of a lawsuit? So the focus really ought to be on, if there is a lawsuit, how can the owner of the park win? Not, how can the city lose? You are here to protect us, that's our expectation, and that's why we're so frustrated.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
And I appreciate some of the points you brought up, and let me, tell me if my logic is right, if you're saying that your park has the higher rent, and we're saying that they have to be on comparable rents, shouldn't that help you? In other words, they can't raise it because your comparable rents in other parks are lower.
That's in the ordinance now.
You, you would think, but since the rent has not been held at the reins by being, to prevent it from being increased, what you're saying is, either it stays where it's at, and what would be really awesome is if it was rolled back to what is fair for the area at this time, the city at this time.
That's what, in my mind, I was thinking, because we were saying it had to be comparable, then you couldn't continue to raise it until you, at least, if you couldn't roll it back, at least you couldn't continue to go out of proportion.
Exactly, and those things were brought up at the...
And it's in here.
The rent review, contesting, those items were brought up, but there still is nothing to block the increases that were given, which now have increased over 6%.
Bill?
I was just going to say, that's the answer, is the, if a landlord or a park owner chooses to ignore, let's say the commission says, "Well, you're, you're already higher than comparable rents," but if the landlord said, "I don't care, I'm going to raise it anyway," you know, there, there you are.
That's what this all gets down to, yeah.
And that is the reputation of our owner, that is the attitude, that is the stance, and so we're looking for that empowerment, and we are at our wits' end on asking for something different than a rent stabilization ordinance. We are at our wits' end, that's why we keep pounding this issue, it's the only thing that we are aware of that will empower us to make it a level playing field.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry you get tired of hearing it, but...
That's all, I think tonight...
But I appreciate the way you deliver it, it helps a lot to help understand.
I think tonight you did a lot of things that, that brought some stuff forward, that also, we corrected some of it, to allow, in this evening things, I hope we can do that, set that up for evening meetings, so everybody can make it, because I think that you, you had a good point.
And I do want to convey an appreciation for your effort, and I'm understanding the, the, the fear of litigation, but everybody can sue everybody, and therefore, the claim that I placed earlier is what it is because of what I feel is justified, and then it's up to everybody else to come forward and, and place their perspective, and a decision is made, but those decisions are binding, and that gives me the empowerment to try.
Mike, you have a question? Terry, I guess one, kind of philosophical, is it the increase in rent, or that when the rent has gone up, the lack of maintenance perhaps has been suspect, are those the two kind of issues that are kind of going on at one time here out there?
Yes.
Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park is basically lipstick on a pig. To drive through the park, it looks like it's well-maintained. If you go behind the scenes, walk on the green belt, and see the broken-down cart that we have paid for over the years, that's been on blocks for two years, if you open the doors of the laundry room, and, and see where things are hanging off the hinges, and paint's peeling and such, the issue of the perception of maintenance in the park is, is highly irritating to the residents, because we know better. But, even so, even with the paving of the streets that they did recently, you could paint the whole place, and it still doesn't justify this huge increase that we've been hit with in just the four or five years. It, it just is greed, it really is bottom line of greed, I mean, you could plate the pool of gold, and it still wouldn't justify the increases.
Bill, you had a question, did you not?
Well, I assume we've had our housing code people out there to...
Yes, yes, we have.
Recently?
Yes, there was a comprehensive list submitted probably two months ago, I think, the latest one, we went out and we went through everything.
Did you notify the owner of things to correct?
Yes.
And we'll check on it.
We cited, I think, one or two items on, it was three or four pages of items, one or two items came under the city codes, we cited for that, and the rest were the owner's responsibility.
So they were cited for that, so that's going to correct?
They weren't cited, they were, they were informed of the, of the list.
So they'll correct those, okay.
And, again, I'm going to express appreciation for those efforts, it doesn't solve the problem, though. Really, the park has not changed much as far as, let's say, amenities for the existing residents, street parking has become a huge issue, so now we've had a reduction of that, we've had Halasius Management that was terrorizing the neighborhood, we've got those things in black and white, we have issues of residents now currently being pressured to maintain these huge overgrown trees that were planted in the park when the park was built, so we're having to scramble and show that there's MRL violations, mobile home residency law violations by management, it's getting people upset, there's documentation that residents are receiving of additional costs that they're going to incur if those trees aren't dealt with within 10 days. So there's a lot of things that are in the mix of why we feel the rent raises we've been getting are not justified.
Terry, we got a couple of the speakers, I'd like to move forward, because we've been here 20 minutes talking with you.
Can I ask you one question, a favor, though, I'm not a question, a favor.
But it's worth it, Mr. Morgan.
It is, we've worked on this for a long time. Can you do me a favor? I would like to see these numbers in, in black and white, so we can look at them, and I trust you to give us good numbers, and I'd appreciate it if you could just list this out in writing, so that we can see it.
Help me understand specifically...
Well, you're talking, you're talking about costs going up, you're talking about utilities going up, you're talking about rent going up, put it out so we can really see it and, and really understand it, because you have a very good way of explaining it and not exaggerating, and, you know, and putting things in huge pictures, so...
I'm not quite as animated as some individual.
Well, no, it's getting into, and you can't talk in such generality, you, you break it down into pieces, and we appreciate that.
It's the security guard in me.
That's right.
Just one tiny thing about your procedure, even though you're requesting less signatures to be obtained, the rent increases are based on what month the person moves in, therefore, there are 12 months in a year, and if you break it out just dryly, out of 227 mobile homes divided by 12, that's the possibility of how many rent increases were in that month, but we have no way of knowing who got the increase, and that was brought up at the meeting that I attended, of which the suggestion was that it's up to the city to find out how many people received that increase. We asked for that information from Amber, and she said that that's proprietary information, they would not divulge that. Therefore, we have to physically run around and knock on doors and ask, "Did you get this rent increase? Did you get this rent increase?" That's crazy, so...
And I'll put that on my list, but I want to find out, I think you could still individually file.
Individually, you can file.
And I heard that earlier, and I'm, I'm hoping that's exactly what I'm understanding too, which would be great.
Terry, can I make one question? Terry, I think, I, I have a, a commercial lease, I think that is proprietary information.
It is.
I think there's a legal that you're not really supposed to divulge that, I'm, now, you can, I can go out to my other tenants and ask them, but they don't have to answer that, but I have no idea what the other tenants in my, my center are paying, I think that is a negotiation between the two parties, I think it may be proprietary.
I'm thinking that what we're asking for is the knowledge of who got a rent increase, not how much are they going to be paying now, because everybody's rent is not the same.
Well, if you ask it that way, and not talk a figure, you might be able to do that.
That's exactly what we've been asking for, who got a rent raise, not how much are you going to be paying now, but, you know, I've been there over 30 years, my increase is different than somebody else's that got it in the same month, but it's all based on what you pay and that percentage of increase.
Terry, my attorney, looks like he wants to say something about what's in the ordinance, can you talk, John, or Don?
Am I leaving now?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do want to point out that we, we did hear that comment, and we did try to address it in Section 050B, we do have a provision in there that if the increase affects more than 25% of the tenants with non-fixed term leases, the owner must provide us with a list of those tenants, so that we can provide them notice, so we would share that, so...
If he chooses to.
Well, if they choose not to, then we would probably waive the five requirement then, if they're not going to cooperate with us, so, you know, we, we have tried to address it the best we can, we're, we're not, I think it's a little bit different than Councilmember Kildee about asking, we're not asking for their rents, we're just saying, who is affected by the four, five, six, whatever percentage rent is, who are those tenants, and if they choose not to, then, again, our recommendation would be to waive the, the requirement, if they complain that we couldn't find people, we didn't have time, we would absolutely accept it. Again, it's not to be a barrier, as I pointed out, the five was really just a reality check to make sure that there was a, you know, a kind of a core group that at least felt similarly put out by the rent increase. So, I think we have tried to address that, and hopefully that will do the trick.
That did.
Thumbs up, okay.
We made it a lot easier for people to come and file now, so, now, let's go to the next speaker, Renee Yomson, Yomson, sorry. Imzon, sorry.
Letter 163 via Rosal.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, I'm requesting three changes, unless you guys change the whole thing, which I, that would be preferable. Leave in the provision that the maximum rent must be posted, or at least made available upon request, it doesn't cost anything to anyone, and it just helps us keep track of things. The other thing is reinstate the option of judicial review, I know you guys don't sound like you're up for that, but that leaves intact some, some enforceability of the rules, or the, of the arbitration. And then reevaluate the adoption of, of a rent stabilization ordinance, because, you know, previously you're afraid of litigation, but in July of 2015, the City of El Monte adopted that ordinance, and they've yet to be challenged, so I think the City of Camarillo has an obligation to consider this new information before enacting the watered-down version that we have today. We have a rent review law that has failed us, after reading what you've produced, I'm confused, because as much worse than it was before, this terrible law downgrades the process to a voluntary mediation, where the park owner can, park owner can completely opt out of the process without absolutely, with absolutely no consequences. This year, mobile homes in the county of Ventura are limited to a 2% increase, the The City of Oxnard is 1.14%. Thousand Oaks is 0.4%. Do you know how much my rent increase is this year? I just got a notice. My rent increase is 6.5%. And no, Jan McDonald, I can't just sue Brian Fitterer because he's increasing my rent too high because there's no rent control law in Camarillo. I just can't do it. These rents are driving down our home values because the higher the rent goes, the lower you have to sell your house. Because when someone comes in to buy a house, they have to weigh, you know, I'm going to buy a house. I need to afford the rent and the cost of the house, so if the rent is high, I can only afford so much. There's two parties involved. There's the owner of the park and the owner of the house. But if the owner of the park has free will to keep increasing rents, he's just literally crapping on the homeowner. And that's to answer Kevin's questions about, you know, how's the rent breakdown? It's an addition of two different parties trying to find a market value for their house. Yeah, so there's tons of money that's leaving the city. I used to be able to afford, you know, decorative, you know, increasing my, you know, my property, making it look nicer, $100 a month, and now I can't.
I think we're going to come to sum it up because I think we got that same letter you're reading. Each one of us read that same thing.
Okay, well, I change it, but yeah.
Okay.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
The six and a half, is that what, every year? Has it been, how many years has it been since your rent went up?
Last year, Brian Fitterer increased the rent for the entire park at 5%. This year, it's, for me, it's 6.5%.
So you got the five and the six and a half?
You're saying 11% in two years?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't 11% in two years, it was 11 and a half.
It's 11 and a half, I know, but I'm just saying, that's quite a bit. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Hello, folks, any other questions or comments or questions of staff?
Is that, are we done?
We're done.
No, you...
Oh, I got one more, I'm sorry, I forgot. How can I forget Bart Stern's? Bart?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Morgan, city council members and staff. Bart Stern, 1601 Carmen Drive, right up the street, president of Ventura Investment Company. I'm here tonight to speak from two perspectives. Number one, as an apartment owner in Camarillo, or in this case, a rental, forget the new term right now.
Complex.
A rental unaffected multifamily property. There are four properties that will be under our ownership and management within the city in the amended ordinance. And I'm also speaking as an appointed commissioner on the Rent Review Commission. And I've been appointed for about 20 years now. It's an honor and I really have appreciated the process. Want to just explain that the, I've attended only the apartment-related hearings. I've been appointed as an apartment owner with the amendment. I'll have the opportunity also to attend the mobile home-related hearings. There have been, over the past 20 years, maybe 10 hearings related to apartments. The non-binding nature of the commission, I've been a commissioner both under, when there was binding and non-binding, decisions made, or at least decisions that could be appealed to binding arbitration. The process, the voluntary mediation process, in my opinion, both as an owner and as a commissioner, has worked very well. From the perspective of a property owner, and I know that the intent of the city and of the ordinance has not been to establish rent control, so from that perspective, it's been successful as a property owner. And also, as a commissioner, I've seen that it's a very valuable forum for residents, both in mobile home communities and apartments, to be able to attend, have their voices heard. I've noticed that virtually all of the hearings have been related to, in terms of apartments, the combination of rent increases as opposed to the quality of the product. Totally support that. The last two hearings that I've attended, as the owner representative, I've had the loudest voice in discussing with the affected property owner that they need to make improvements because we all want to be known, or at least it's very important to me to be known as a responsible community provider. There are customers, the residents are our customers. We want to both enjoy a good real estate investment, but at the same, or more important, we're providing housing and want to provide a quality environment. I really appreciate the correspondence I've had with Mr. Davis in terms of my comments on the ordinance, so I don't have any additional comments. There is one clarification, I have three seconds left, related to...
No, just okay, finish it, finish it.
Related to the two words in Section... Section 060, in the considerations by the commission for an increase, and there was the sentence that was discussed related to that the commission will not support a rent increase related to a change of ownership. And then the last two words says, "or taxes." So it's clear to me for two reasons that those two, last two words should, if the ordinance is consistent and not having conflicting sections, those should be removed. There are two other sections within the same, two, within the same section, Section D and... Primarily, Section D that also relates to increases or decreases. Let's see, there's one that's related specifically to...
And the size of the rental unit? Oh.
A, thank you, wrong page.
Oh, increase...
The definition, the definition by the California Civil Code and property, let's see. Rule two of the State Board of Equalization Property Tax Rules notes that when a property does transfer, that the new property taxes are set based on the market value of the property. So that's defined as a market expense, the increased property taxes. So it's very possible for a long-term property owner to enjoy low, very low property taxes because of Prop 13 caps on the increases, and also might pass those through in the form of lower rents, below-market rents to the residents. When a property is sold, the taxes are defined as taxes based on the market value of the property. So it would be in conflict of achieving market rents if an owner isn't able to base its rents or valuation on defined market expenses. It's not, you know, it's not something that's going to, I think, dramatically affect the process here, but in terms of reality, it does create a conflict in terms of that. If someone were to have their property appraised, whether the property taxes have been reassessed or if they're low because of Prop 13, the appraised value would be based on the market property taxes, even if your own property taxes are lower. So it's something to consider. I'm happy to provide more information, trying to go as fast as possible.
Questions, questions real quick, Mark, for relief. Number one...
It's a pleasure to be here. I really have enjoyed serving on the commission.
I got a question first this time. You have a typical two-bedroom, you know, you've got four different complexes here in town. A typical two-bedroom rental, what would you, what's the other rents running now in regular, normal apartments?
There's a range, there's quite a range of properties in quality and age in Camarillo. The highest are about $2,350 a month. Lowest you could find is probably in the range of $1,400, I would guess, between 14, maybe 175 to 1425.
For a two-bedroom, okay.
I can tell you what Section 8 will pay, is $1,225, if you could find one.
I have a question.
Okay.
For a two-bedroom, one bath.
Kevin?
Bart, I don't want to put you on the spot, but let me coax this question. Like, industry standard, if there is some rate adjustments that may or not have to be made, typically in your industry that you know a whole lot about, is it based on CPI or is it based on market? Or are there some other providing, you know, determining factors on that?
It's a great question. In terms of market rate apartments, which is the vast majority of all cities and jurisdictions, it's really based on quality and what a lessee, a resident, will pay. So just based on CPI, no, not necessarily. A responsible property owner who does what he or she can to operate the property, both from the perspective of management, responsiveness, being professional, providing a safe environment and amenities, can enjoy whatever the market bears. And so it's not an easy question to answer, but there are a lot of variables. And if I was going to boil it down to one thing, I would say it's the quality of the product. Just like anything on the fair market, people will pay for, pay an appropriate price for an appropriate product. And also recognizing that it's not like buying a gallon of milk. It's someone's home, and so we have to be sensitive to the fact that this is where someone lives. And so it doesn't make sense to gouge people or go above, way above the market for the quality of the product. So those things generally get sorted out in a free market, and this forum is a great forum for residents to be heard.
One last question. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead, Bill, I'll do my last question, go ahead.
Just to follow back on what you were talking about with taxes, you're, as I gather, you're asking that we do consider allowing for rate increases if the property had been sold and the property is reassessed.
My request was just to remove the last two words in that last sentence of Section 060, which is "or taxes," primarily because it conflicts with the ordinance itself, defining itself as accepting market...
Conditions.
Free market, free market conditions.
Okay, thank you.
More a clarification rather than something that I would pound my fist over or think that it's a big dramatic issue. But it does conflict with other terms of the agreement.
I suspect if properties get sold, it's like anything else out there gets sold. Probably most of the mobile home parks have been resold since 1976 or '77, whenever the Prop 13 went in. So there's been some adjustments along the way, is it?
And I very much recognize that mobile home residents have a unique set of circumstances as compared to apartment residents.
Very unique.
Last question. We talked about the two bedrooms and their price for running from 14 to $2,350. Would you think that if someone's paying, was it $1,300 someone said out there? How much a month, the high one? Stay right there, just tell me. If you're doing $1,275 or $1,300 for a two-bedroom, you own it, you own it, right, Matt?
Yeah, you're buying the...
No, I mean, you're just renting the space.
That's just the space.
That's all you need. Okay, so it's 12, that includes the mortgage?
No.
Okay, so $1,275 for rental space, would you think that's high?
I think that it's, there is a very good question and answer given in regard to quality as related to income generated, and so...
This is not one of our highest-quality mobile home parks, go ahead.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean that it can't be or shouldn't be. And if, I've seen, and I'm sure that you've seen, that the property owners who really work hard on making their properties the best they can, within reason, you probably don't hear so much from the residents of those properties. And that may not be directly related to the rent. I think that there, I understand that rent is obviously a big issue, but it's a little easier to understand...
Well, if someone got 11%...
There are investments in the property.
If someone got 11.5% increase in the past two years, would you think they should go to the Rent Review Commission?
In terms of percentage increase, I think, again, it's directly related to what investment the property owner's putting into the property and the quality of what they're receiving. I think we would all agree that Camarillo is a great place to live, and it makes sense to pay more for something of higher quality. And it doesn't necessarily make sense, there's a disconnect between paying a lot more for something that is not being accordingly invested in.
Well, who knows, they may be coming back for you again with that kind of increase, we'll see. That's all the questions I have, any other questions, any comments? Thanks, Bart, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Diane Hotten, I hope I got it right. Houghton or Hotten?
Hi, good evening, Diane Hoffen. I sent a letter earlier today, I'm going to give to Jeffrey, I mean, an email. I'm at the Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park, and I'm not going to read my letter because you say read the emails, so I'll just pass it on. I just want to say that we are real people. I don't believe that we have a petty complaint here. We're just people, you know, one of us right now has a newborn baby at home. One of us brings baskets of food to the clubhouse every single week. One of us takes care of elderly, sick parents. And I, for me, am, on my 20th wedding anniversary, am standing here right now. Would I rather be with my husband right now? We don't want to be here. We don't want to stick it to this park owner. We're just asking for not such high rent increases because we've done our research. We see it's the highest, and we need to do something here. We're desperate and, you know, we don't want to be here. We're not trying to, you know, be troublemakers as maybe, you know, some people think or say or... And Ms. McDonald with the HOA group, you had addressed, Matt, with the HOA group. That doesn't work. We need to go higher than that. A lot of people don't attend for whatever their personal reasons are. You know, like we had said, we get different rent increases. So when we do have HOA meetings, people show up and say, "I got this rent increase and I got this then." And we can't really do anything about it at that moment because it's also scrambled up. And then we leave the meeting and we try to brainstorm over what we can do, and guess where we end up? We end up right back here. So the HOA meetings don't really work either. We need to go higher than that. So it, and we have 227 people in the park. So if you figure HOA meetings are going to get all those people into that clubhouse, you know, to figure all these rent increases, the bottom line is, we all know, it's no secret that these are really high increases in this particular park. And like I said, we all got things we need to be home for, and that's where we'd rather be. We're not troublemakers, we're here for a real reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much, questions? Thanks for your input.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments or questions from staff? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this time.
I don't think it was a public hearing.
We'll close, any more comments? Now, how many, any comments about this?
I got a couple of comments.
I do too.
Bill, go ahead, you can ask it first.
Well, it's interesting, I'm sitting here thinking of the hearings we had 20 years ago about Lamp lighter, it was under another ownership who apparently has cared about as much of his tenant, or not tenants, but his people that live there as this one does. And I come to the conclusion, I think we've got a good ordinance, except it doesn't work with a rogue owner who doesn't care about what he or she does to the people living there or how fast they want to accumulate their wealth. And I don't know to have an answer for it, but I'm beginning to think that maybe we ought to at least talk about some kind of a rent stabilization board and then get, you know, get to the point where at least we bring it back and talk to, and talk to that owner and say, "This is going to, what's going to happen to you if you don't settle yourself."
Your honor?
Yes.
I think what we have before us tonight does one thing. It clarifies what has been going on for 15 years and gets rid of all the words or the expectations that didn't really even exist in practicality. So it cleaned up the language and makes an ordinance that's easy to understand and to deal with. But I guess what I'm, I'm very frustrated and I don't know what to do, and maybe someone out there can figure out what to do because you're exactly right, Mr. Little. What we're dealing with here is someone who doesn't want to play by our rules and doesn't want to participate and maybe be one of those responsible owners that Mr. Stern talks about. So I personally, I think we need to adopt what's before us tonight because anyone who's been around city council knows you can always change things later. But at least it cleans it up. But I would like staff to look into this City of El Monte... But I would like staff to look into this City of El Monte, see what they did, bring us the facts. I'm one that, if you can't tell yet, I deal with facts, so give me the facts. If indeed it's, it's something that's worked, if it's tested, let's see what they've done. And maybe some research on how other cities have dealt with a particular owner that isn't willing to participate. And I like your term, a rogue owner. I think that's exactly what we've got here. And if there's some way that we can help in bringing him to the table and making him be responsible. The Lamplighter Mobile Home Park is, should be an absolutely beautiful spot. It sits where it sits out there, and it just should be, it should be gorgeous. And when I hear that he's going to charge you to cut down, to trim a tree that probably doesn't even belong to you, I'm going, my gosh. So I'm more than willing to do anything we can to help, but I think we need to do this first, so that we clarify, we get all the apartments under it now, but I would, I think we're not done, and I think we need to look at a few more things.
Yeah, Charlotte?
Yeah, I'm, I've said it before, I'm basically against rent control. However, I have sat through, I believe, every time that the City Council of Camrio has considered this ordinance and whatever changes. I was here when you first adopted it, and it was adopted not because of mobile home parks, but because of apartments. I could even give you the names of the women who came forward and asked for it. I was sitting in the audience for a different matter, but I listened to everything, all the hearings. So I feel like I've been around this ordinance since it started. It used to have a lot more teeth, and things settled down. I don't, I have not heard, at least for thirty years, of a problem with an apartment complex. For the last thirty years, all I've ever heard about is problems with mobile home parks.
And it's been the one...
The one on Ventura Boulevard used to be the big one, and before that, and in the middle of that, and after that, Lamplighter Mobile Home Park. And it didn't matter which, which owner. There was always, there were different, different issues. Only when we, when I first started hearing, the rents were much, much, much less, and the increases were maybe ten dollars a month. I, I agree with what's been said, however, I disagree with Mrs. McDonald that we should go ahead and adopt this. If all this is, if all this is doing is putting into the code what we've actually been doing, then let's keep on doing what we've been doing. And take a look at what El Monte did. And here in a letter dated August twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, they talked about Modesto and Marina adopting something, and then, and these, at least, we've had a chance, we would have a chance to see if they've been challenged. Since July, doesn't give much chance to see if they've been challenged. But I've got all the stuff you guys have given me in the past. I've gone through that. There are some others. There's one in the Central Valley, other than Modesto, that adopted one, and we can easily look through and find that. Find out what it was they adopted, and that was a couple of years ago. See if that's been challenged. Let's take a look at some of these, because I believe if we had something, I think this guy is totally a rogue owner. I think all he has done is come in, listen to the Rent Review Commission, and then thumb his nose at us. And frankly, I'm getting tired of it. I think that, you know, he, he doesn't live here, he doesn't live in an adjacent county. He's got seventeen million people between us and him, and we're just Camrio, and the Camrio park that he owns is a very, very small part of what he owns. And I don't think he cares anything about what we tell him, what we ask him to give us, what we recommend the rents be, or what the tenants think of him. I, I just think he's...
It doesn't care.
Despicable.
Okay, go ahead.
I, you know, I'm getting tired of it. And so I think we need to look at that for, for mobile home parks. That's where the problem lies. The problem lies in the fact that people have coaches, that they have invested a lot of money in. They have owners who are charging them as much rent as other people are paying for homes. And that, that's a problem. So I, I just think we need to take a look at what the others are doing, but I think instead of adopting this tonight, we need to...
More information.
Get more information.
Can I rebut a little bit, though, about the not adopting it? Because we have apartment buildings, we have an awful lot of apartment buildings come online. There is nothing in this document that would keep us from going on and researching what to do with, with mobile home parks, but it clarifies some things that have been problems for staff to deal with, because someone picks it up and reads it and thinks they read one thing, and the city clerk's shaking her head. So all this does is clean up, and I, I asked the city attorney several times, what's the difference in this ordinance and the practice? It's the same, but it gets rid of a lot of those words that are contradictory. So I really do ask that we do this, but do the next step and look at, at what we can do with that in specific. But a lot of work has gone into cleaning this up, so I would, I would urge us to at least...
I had one other thing, Your Honor. I also would like staff to contact Thousand Oaks, and not just staff, because it was not staff who got the Thousand Oaks ordinance going. It was then-Mayor Andy Fox, still council member.
His parents were in there.
He got all of the owners, not just the one owner, but all of the owners together, and they came up with a rent control ordinance in Thousand Oaks, and it so far is working. It's only been, well, it's been about a year, I think.
Unfortunately, he didn't have an owner like they've got to deal with.
Oh, yes, they did. The one up on the hill behind.
I almost don't know, Andy, you know, it wasn't as bad as this guy.
Well, it, I'm not going to argue the, how bad one was against the other. They had one rogue owner in Thousand Oaks, and they all came together and all agreed, all of the mobile home park owners. And then they, the city attorney drafted the ordinance, and they all agreed that this would apply to all of them.
Kevin?
I know, I won't be real long, because I agree with what's every, what's been said, but this is a segment of the population that's very much needed in our city. I am very concerned about these rate increases. I kept waiting for things to happen, and I kept waiting for the homeowners' association to get up and start negotiating, which you are absolutely right, Jan, where that should start, the homeowners' association with the homeowners, with the owner, start to negotiate these things. I kept waiting for that. I kept waiting for the rent review, you know, the commission to make a finding and have the owner adhere to that, which for many, many years, most of the time they have, this is not the case, but for many years that they have, I kept waiting for that to come along, and I've kept waiting to come along, and I've been out there. And, you know, we had, when my dad first started the business in nineteen sixty, his associate that worked for us for twenty-five years lived out there. And there was a lot of people that were very instrumental in Camrio that lived out there, so this is part of our fabric. And to have this situation happen here, I think, is, is something that is very, very unfortunate. I would like to see what El Monte's doing, and maybe, I think, maybe the control, you know, definition is something that we can work on, like some, we can say something like, you know, rent limitation, or, or let's have some more information. If you're going to raise it this amount, what are you going to do as far as upgrading? Because I think the quality is like in a shopping center, that the rents are pretty much predicated on what the best and the most desirable locations are. So there's other rentals within a shopping center, that's kind of what I know at least a little bit about, that not everybody pays the rate, the same rent, but it depends on the quality of where that, that part of, of your store in that building is. But, you know, I think what the council said here, we, we hear you, we've tried to be patient. I know it's been a tough thing to go through, but we wanted to see if all the stuff that we had in place would work, and clearly now it's not. So my idea is to follow, I think, what, what Jan and, and has said about adopting this now. We can always come back and amend it, because there is some issues perhaps with some apartments and whatnot. Get some more information on this, and we can have a more thorough discussion on what we want to do with the mobile home parks vis-à-vis the apartments. So that would be what I would be in favor of doing at this particular point.
Everyone said a lot of things that, that I like. I was here in the very beginning, nineteen eighty, I was here for that rogue owner, what was his name? Remind me that guy's name.
Delplane.
Delplane. Delplane's worse than these guys. Okay. Well, Delplanes were worse than these guys, because we had to sit here and almost beg them, "Don't raise the rents, and don't keep doing this." Well, they kept doing it. That's why we brought it forward, and this was one of those that I, I was pushing. And that rent arbitration, I pushed. I said, "Hey, look, we'll give them some teeth. I did that for you." But then, years later, the attorneys came back and said, "We're putting ourselves in a position of getting sued by this, that, and the other." Laws have changed. And Bill remembered that. Laws, they said, "Laws have changed." And so we had to take out the arbitration. It had worked very well. In fact, he's, he didn't, when we first talked about arbitration, he didn't raise his rents, because he knew this might be coming, if he did, if he did. Well, that's one of the things I think we need to look at, and making sure the owner of that place say, "You're forcing us into this kind of thing if you keep it, you know, keep your thing at hand." I don't want to do it with apartments. We've got a lot of apartments right now. I want to stick with plain mobile homes, because that's where our problem is, and it's only one owner. All the others, you already told me their rents, so I know they're lower. They're doing what they said they'd do, and they've kept it down. And they've got just as many amenities as you do. They're very good. And so I think that us, us watching, trying to find out what happened, El Monte, not just El Monte, but others that the city attorney told us about before, and some of the decisions that may have been made, we need to know all the facts. If there's been decisions, maybe El Monte hasn't been sued yet, but he could. Who else has sued and lost, and how much do we lose, how much they lose? I'd like to know the facts, because I was an investigator, and I want all the facts, to make sure we don't put ourselves in a jam where we can lose millions. The city doesn't want to do that. But El Monte's first. We want to find out what you're saying about El Monte. The, the mobile home across, you're talking about the one that's across the hill, that was a real nice one, right there in the corner, and they were raising them big time there. That's why they did something about it. But I would want to see, I'm not really a believer in rent control, but I got to see what happens. I mean, this, this is pushing us. There, this, this mobile home park is pushing us. I think you heard, all of us up here are saying the same thing. So let's see what the facts are. Let the guy know what we're doing, and see what happens with that, too, because sometimes they back off or they don't do it. So I'd like to see this, the one thing I want to know about, though, is the tax thing that Bart Sterns was talking about. I'm kind of in favor of taking that part out, too, at the same time as we're doing this other stuff, as part of it. I don't know if anybody supports that, but I'd like to take that part out, as he suggested, and then forward it on, as is, like we all said. Let's look at it right now, but go forward, looking at other things, and other cities, and other cases. Is that agreeable, in taking that part out about taxes? I need, I need some...
Can I ask the...
Let's talk about the exact wording and stuff.
Can we ask the city attorney to come back up and...
And go to that issue about the taxes?
Go through that paragraph again with us.
Yeah, the, the sentence at issue is in Section 060, and it's all the way down at the bottom there. "The commission will not support a rent increase solely by reason of a change of ownership that results in increased costs of debt service." And what Mr. Stern is suggesting is just delete the, or taxes part.
Yeah. I'd like that to be deleted, if...
Because actually, you know, his point's a valid one. There is a increase and decrease in property taxes is a consideration above.
Right.
A.
That's a consideration, I got to look at.
In A, so...
That makes it consistent. Any objections to that?
It really doesn't matter, because it's in both spots anyway, but that's fine. I have no problem. It's a...
But I think we should, as we discussed, add the other section about debt service and refinancing, too, because this is really...
Yes.
Yes.
Property ownership, so...
Have you come up with wording on that?
Yeah, or, or a change in debt service based on refinancing.
Right. That's right.
Or just add that clause.
Mm-hmm. That'd be fair. But the tax part, that's fair, too.
And what are we going to do about I? A fair and just return on the property to the owner? Did we decide on that?
Well, the staff recommendation was in, in support of Mr. Stern's comment, because...
The council has to decide if we ought to add it or not.
Right. It was including comparable market rents within the city was our proposed thing, because frankly, we always have considered that. That's, that's one of the common things. It's always part of the hearings.
I'm in favor of that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion if this...
Are you going along with that?
Wait a minute, we just got a question.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion that would include all the proposed amendments that we've talked about tonight.
Good. Okay, make a, make a motion.
That's what I'm doing.
We need a...
Well, make it.
I'll move, I'll move that we adopt this...
You need to request a reading of the title.
Request retitle, request retitle, sorry about that.
Regarding the rent review mediation board, and with all the amendments that have been discussed and agreed upon tonight.
Bill, we have to request retitle first.
I think we're early.
Okay. Request for reading the title.
This will be the ordinance 1121, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camrio, California, amending and restating Chapter 10.50, Rent Review of Title 10, Public Peace and Welfare of the Camrio Municipal Code pertaining to the establishment of the Camrio Rent Review Commission and the accompanying rent review mediation process that is intended to provide a forum to resolve rent disputes. Now you can go.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second that with a comment.
With the amendment.
Well, we need to, we need to, yeah, we, well, we also, we're not adopt, we're not adopting tonight. The motion would be to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance with the changes that have been described.
With the changes described, yes.
And I'll second that with a comment. I hope you all understand that we're just as frustrated as you are, and you can see that coming out on all of us tonight. And apologize if we got a little short, too, sometimes, but, you know, it's, it's frustrating for us, because in some ways, our hands are tied. We sit here and we say, "This is the way it should be, this is the way we think should, things should be," and sometimes it's, it's tough for us to get there, too. And so we, we hope you understand that, and I think the key to it all is working together, instead of accusing people of, of not caring or not wanting. We are here to work together, but that's the key to it, is working together. And, and we learn things from each other, and, and we deal with the facts. And I think that's what really helps us, when you can bring us those facts and we can really work with it. So I, we appreciate your understanding that and being a part of it.
Okay. One, one thing I want to make sure, our, our comments about the law, the El Monte, because that was a suggestion, and other cities and laws that may affect this, where the people have been sued before here in the past, recent past, we need to know all that stuff, too.
And that just going to be direction?
That's just part, well, that's what I'm doing right now. And that's, that's not in the amendment, but that's a direction. Is that okay?
Yes, you can, you can give direction to the city attorney to return to you with an analysis of potential options with regards to rent stabilization ordinance, or by whatever name.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Sure.
And with that, I'd like some analysis of what the rents are and stuff, not just the wording, but show us facts and numbers and what it does, and I think you kind of had that before as well.
You already did.
I'm just wanting to be clear. We talked about all the changes, but some changes that, that I had suggested were accepted and some not. So could we say that the changes involving the definition of non-fixed term lease, the definition of rent, and the changes in Section 10.50.060I, and, well, they're both under I, but under that is a statement, there were changes.
That's the ones I'm talking about.
Okay, those are the ones you're talking about.
So those are accepted.
And plus, we have a second reading, so we can...
We'll, we'll bring back a red line, and also to add to that list, I think we've got everything covered. We were also going to add mediation in a few places, too, just as a generic term. Just one question on the direction to our office, though, regarding the investigation. For clarification, are you requesting focus on mobile home parks?
Yes.
Or mobile, and apartment, because...
No.
It could be very different, so it'd be much easier to focus on mobile home parks...
No, and just mobile home parks.
And specific provisions regarding them.
No confusion right now, we got to take care of the problem.
Yeah, let's just focus rather than...
Mobile home parks only.
Just want to be clear, because that, that would save a lot of effort.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second in this?
I did.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion passes 5-2-0. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you for comments.
Could we take a five-minute break?
Yeah. We'll take a five-minute break. Oh, man.